...of the United States of America and to the Republic and one nation and the God. This is all liberty.
Kathleen, if you could read in the minutes, or I'm sorry, read in the preamble, sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petitions in the order. They are listed on the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined on the form provided by the Community Development Office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The chair will then open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussion will be between the speaker and the board. Please be respectful of all. In the interest of time, refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the board for consideration this evening, but the board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, the chairman will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones.
Thank you. Tonight, I am going to have Lenny to be sitting in for Rich, who is not here this evening. It's you. Alright, moving on. Couple of housekeeping items. When you come down, please make sure that you sign in on the clipboard and make sure that the microphone, although it has a little green button on there, make sure that that is lit up. That is, we need that for recording purposes. The next ZBA meeting will be November 28th, 2018, and I will call the first petition. Arnie LLC petitioner, owner, variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a two-lot subdivision with one lot having 159 feet point 22, 159.22 feet of frontage, whereas 250 is required. The petition, this petition was remanded back to the zoning board by the Hillsboro County Supreme Court. The parcel is located at 63 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 Residential and Aquifer Conservation District's tax map 4B, Lot 130, case number 2018-02. As this case has been remanded back to the ZBA by the Superior Court to rehear this variance, we're going to be doing rehearing it based on the hardship which was put forward in the judgment from the Superior Court. The board will incorporate all prior minutes and documents that have been supplied and will be hearing tonight on the hardship basis of this variance. Attorney Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Greg Michael, on behalf of the applicant, together with Brett Allard from my office in Manchester Bernstein Sure, as you've just described, and I did briefly discuss this with Matt Serge to gain an understanding of where the focus would be. I believe we understand the focus. It's on the hardship issue. I will proceed accordingly. I have a number of points that I probably will avoid unless the board is going to be interested in hearing about the fascinating history of hardship. The court indicated it would be important to look at the statute and applicable case law. That was part of their order. And in preparation for that, I did prepare a bit of a, kind of a history of things. I may reference it briefly, but I'm sure the board is somewhat aware of what that is, and I don't plan to take up too much of the board's time in that regard. But if you're looking for more information, we'll do our best to provide it.
Thank you.
As was stated, and I would point out that I was not at the prior meetings, the first meeting on February 28th, nor did I attend the rehearing discussion, which of course is not really a public matter. The board takes that up on their own. But this was a request to subdivide 10.5 acres of land at 63 Wilson Hill Road basically into two parcels. And what happens is because there's 441 feet of frontage, which is fairly significant, it did not meet the 250-foot standard. Had we met that standard, we would not have had to have come to the ZBA. The proposal is exactly the same as one presented and approved by this board in 1989. Now, I'm not focusing on that. I want to make that clear. But I would point out that this board felt that the criteria had been met at that time. The court indicated that you people could review various factors, and the one that they sent back is the, the one that we're talking about tonight is the hardship factor, and that's what we're going to be discussing. I would like to make it clear that, I want to make it clear, and this is important to me. I've been coming to this board for over 40 years. I'll date myself. And I want to make it clear that I believe this board acts in a very fair and even-handed manner, and I've been around it for many, many, many years. And I also want to make it clear that us being here tonight is certainly not a criticism of the board. I believe that it was, you know, sometimes these facts get mixed up a little bit. We get mixed up, the board can get mixed up. And I just want to make it clear that we appreciate being here, and whatever we say or do tonight is not to be critical of the board. I believe you've been very fair over the years. I just wanted to say that. It's important to me because of the length of time that I've been dealing with you folks. Again, we're going to be reviewing the hardship criteria. The variance was granted in 89. It expired. Arnie, my client, purchased the land in 2018. And there was some reliance on the famous Harris Pond case. We're not going to get into that tonight, but some reliance that the board might reapprove the variance. And we're not going to get into that. That's not the focus of tonight's proceeding. Again, there was a hearing, a request, and off to court we went with it. It's been remanded back. And I point out, zoning law can be somewhat complicated in defense of the board, in defense of us as well. It's not simple. The hardship criteria in particular has changed significantly over the past 30 or 40 years. Significantly. You start with the famous Governor's Island case, which was a very, very stringent, stringent standard. If you could use the land for anything, you weren't entitled to a variance. That's Governor's Island, 1983. We move to simplex in 2001, and the Supreme Court clearly stated, "This isn't right. This is way, way too stiff. That standard can't stand." And I'm quoting, "We depart today from that restrictive approach that has defined unnecessary hardship and adopt an approach more considerate of the constitutional right to enjoy property." A very significant change. We then move briefly into the BOSHA area. And I only want to bring it up because that's what triggers the statutory amendment in 2010 defining hardship. BOSHA created area and use variances. Those don't exist anymore by statutory change in 2010. It became a confusing area, and the legislature felt that it was time to get rid of it, and they did. What they then passed was the statute, finally. If you recall, four of the criteria were statutory for a long time. The hardship criteria was open to discussion and talked about in a number of cases that I'm not going to get into unless the board, again, wants more history. I'm not inclined to go there. But basically, the statute focuses on two methodologies, two ways, two ways of looking at hardship. Very similar, but there's a little bit of a twist. I believe that we meet both of them, but I think we certainly meet the first one. And it is, and I'll read it to you, it's important that we lay the basis for this. Unnecessary hardship means that due to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, first, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance, that's important, and the specific application of that provision to the property, and, there's an "and," the proposed use is a reasonable one. I'd like to talk briefly about special conditions. This property is, if you look at the map, you know, show me the, show me the map, Brett. You know, you quickly look at it, you wonder. It's a kind of a melange of lots in this area on Wilson Hill Road. My parents lived out there for many years, and my brother still lives out there, so I'm very familiar with the road. I know what it looks like. It hasn't changed a whole lot in the past 20 or 30 years. But if you look directly across in our lot... Our lot is the 10 and 1/2 acre parcel with the star on it. And I've pointed out 13 different lots on this plan that are kind of in the area, and it's a melange of different lots. If you could look at lots 1, 3, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13, those all have substandard frontage. All substandard frontage. If you look at Lot 6, you'll note, and let me point out Lot 6, which is right here, you'll discover that there's quite a bit of wetland in the middle of it, which makes it difficult in terms of the Meramec rules regarding contiguous soils for subdivision. I want to make it clear that this lot is a little bit, is quite a bit different than our lot. I would also point out that Lot 5, the wetlands pretty much track, when you move down toward it here by the house that exists, track more to the center of the lot, making it somewhat difficult to deal with this parcel to maintain appropriate wetland setbacks. It's quite a bit different. You know, our lot is different than these. Lot 2 is, while larger in size, 14.86, notices less frontage. The house is located in almost dead center to the frontage. But that particular lot is a little bit different because here, here, and this is important, you might be able to economically put a road in as cul-de-sac and get two or three or four lots in here because of the size of the lot, which again is different than our parcel. Our parcel, when you look at it, is, has a fair amount of frontage. The house is located to the left as you look at it. It's in a good spot to deal with another house, and we show it, I could pull it out, but we show it pretty much next to it, but meeting all setbacks. I repeat, meeting all 100,000 square foot setbacks. So, interestingly enough, if we had moderate soils here, we wouldn't be here. 200 feet of frontage, 80,000 square feet, we meet the size requirements. We wouldn't even be here. To suggest that this somehow, this proposal creates some higher density just doesn't, just doesn't wash, quite frankly. It just doesn't wash. If we had sewer and water, we could be on 40,000 square feet. To somehow suggest that allowing this creates some sort of a compression or creates extra, you know, units in an area that can't support it, just doesn't stand the test of reason. We can put a well and a septic in here, no problem. The lots are plenty big enough for that purpose. So this lot is a bit different, and clearly different than the ones across the street, which are, again, don't meet the current frontage requirement. So this lot is somewhat unique in its environment. The other thing this board found that's important, they found hardship in 89. We're not going to litigate the case, but I think what was important, and I want to bring it up because it is a feature of this particular property, is there is a fairly significant, I got to go back to the other plan. You can see the contours. There's a fairly significant rise quickly on this parcel, on our parcel, right through it. And the board was very careful in 89. And one of the things, one of the conditions that they determined of this lot was, this lot, it's difficult to put a road in because of the rock ledge. If you read the minutes of that meeting, it would be difficult to build or develop an additional road for subdivision. What they meant by that, the only thing it could have meant, was to build a Class 5 town road would have been extraordinarily difficult to, in other words, create appropriate frontage to subdivide. And they looked at that as a very significant condition burdening this lot, which it is. Very significant condition. It works fine with a private driveway. And I want to remind the board at this juncture, as we talk about that, we may hear about it from a butters, I don't know. This has, this has to go to the planning board for subdivision approval. And at that time, they'd be looking at the slopes and the different areas in question. I'd also point out that when you move up the slope, there's a kind of a flatter area where the house would be located, similar to where the existing house is located. So this lot is rather unique. It's not the same as the other lots, based upon soils, wet areas, slopes. It is something that the, again, this board found many years ago, 30 years ago, met that standard. And I believe it still meets the standard. Because the one thing that hasn't changed, the one thing that hasn't changed is the lot and the area. The lot and the area really haven't changed. The law has changed. And that's what the Superior Court said. The law has changed. The hardship standard is much different. Next, we have to look at what's the, you know, does a fair, we need to look at, is there a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision of the property? What is the purpose of frontage? What is it? Basically, and if you look at the Metzger case way back in 1977, this is what the Supreme Court said about frontage. It's not me talking, it's the Supreme Court. "Usually, frontage requirements can be justified on the basis that they are a method of determining lot size to prevent overcrowding." No surprise. In Metzger, the frontage was 123, 3 feet, or 200 feet was required. And the court said, "When the restriction is applied to the particular property is unnecessary to accomplish a legitimate public purpose or gain to the public," of which there's none here, "is so slight, but harm to the citizen and his property is great. Exercise of the police power becomes arbitrary and unreasonable." That's 1977. That's actually before Governor's Island. But it was recognition by the court that frontage is kind of an amorphous concept, because if you've got the lot size, you have access, you have eight, you can put your well in, put your septic in, there is no overcrowding, the acreage is correct, we're not asking for a size variance, then frontage becomes a significant burden on a person with a 10 or 12 or 13 acre parcel. You're in effect saying to them, "Too bad, so sad." The other thing we've got to look at is, you know, another case I just want to bring to your attention is the Garrison v. Henneker case. And that case has a number of twists to it, but the one significant twist, I just want to go back to my notes for a minute. Is, for the first time, the Supreme Court looked at economics as part of hardship. They clearly said, they adopted a case out of state, and they said, "Unnecessary hardship requires a determination of whether the zoning restriction is applied interferes with the landlord's reasonable use of the property." I would suggest that this does. A reasonable use would allow us to subdivide. "This factor hardship includes consideration of the landowner's ability to receive a reasonable return on his or her investment. Thus, economics is now a consideration of hardship." And in this case, I would point out, and I only refer back to Harris Pond just briefly, when Arnie bought this, they had some reliance that the prior variance, which was granted by the board, would likely be reapproved. Now, you don't have to do that. We know that. But they had, you know, some reliance on, I think anybody would. If you bought the land and had a prior variance, I think you might think, "Hey, it met the criteria. Nothing's, not much has changed. Maybe I'll get it again." But I just want to point that out. So what is a factor, and I think it's important? The second factor is, is it reasonable? This was answered by the Vigent case that the court cites, we cite in our memorandum. And basically, it says, "At the end of the day, if the use is reasonable that you're proposing, if it's allowed, an allowed use, it's a reasonable use." Here, it is residential. That's what we're proposing. If the lot is subdivided, therefore, we believe the second factor is clearly, clearly observed. I don't know that we need to get into the second part of the statutory definition. We usually don't go there.
No.
I think we made it, but you know, if we want to go there, we can go there. But I'm, I've cut short a lot of, you know, the historical remarks as I promised you I would. You've got a fairly long agenda tonight. My point is, is that I can appreciate what the thoughts may have been, but the thoughts that existed and were brought into the case on February 28th were the old Governor's Island rule. It's in the court's order. Basically, the court said, "What you did was unreasonable. What you did is you looked at the fact that they're using it for a house, therefore, therefore, you've got your reasonable use. Nothing else should be done." And that's not the law. That's not the rule. That's not the standard now. The standard is a more flexible standard, trying to observe the special nature of the lot, the ability of the lot to support easily a second dwelling, and to allow subdivision, because that's really what's going on here. Your thing is to subdivide. We have to go to the planning board to get it, you know, to allow the frontage. The planning board has to subdivide it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So the, so the big, the big question, obviously, is the, is basically the frontage. And I'm not really sure how ledge plays into it, but I, I wanted, the big thing was the, was the frontage aspect, you know, where you're looking for less than 250 feet of frontage, and based upon, and believe that the, was, the hardship was that there was, couldn't find hardship based upon, you know, going with less frontage. So I just want to make sure that that was, that's what addressed, because that specifically is what we were, what we talked about. Now, I understand that you cited a lot of cases, cited a lot of history, but looking at that specifically?
We look at it as the court looked at it. Is it reasonable to allow this use on this parcel? That's what we're looking at. The frontage is more than enough to get in, more than enough to get out. There's no squeezing. The lot otherwise meets all of the zoning standards. In that instance, to restrict this lot, I'm reading the court now, "It's unreasonable. It's unfair. It does not meet the spirit of the constitutional test outlined in simplex, which is, hey, guys, you've got to be more respectful of people's property rights." Remember, zoning takes away rights. You people, I've told you this, you people are the safety valve. You guys are the valve. You guys are the ones that say, "Wait a minute." You know, when we did soil-based zoning, which created this problem, it's soil-based zoning that created this problem. Did you think, we did not, as a town, did we go out and look at every lot? Did we go out and look at every chunk of land? Did we go out and look at what it, we didn't.
Oh, okay.
But that's why you're here.
Yep.
That is why you are here. You're here to say, "Wait a minute. This is a 10 and 1/2 acre parcel of land. This can easily support another house without overcrowding. It meets every other zoning standard. To restrict this based on frontage is unreasonable based upon the unique features and the location of this parcel." So that, you're the valve. You folks are the ones that can say, "Wait a minute. It doesn't make sense. I'm not here trying to squeeze, you know, a acre and a half lot on minimal frontage. We're not doing that. This meets every other standard." As the court said, you know, I could read you the order, I'm not going to.
Not to.
You've read it yourself. He said, "What happened here was unreasonable in the context of this case. That's why it was sent back."
Alright.
And I'm trying to take you through the rationale of it in hopes that we can move on with us.
No, and I appreciate that. And it actually shed some light on more, better definition of unreasonable hardship.
Thank you.
Or unnecessary hardship. Sorry, I appreciate that. Is there any questions from the board for Attorney Michael? Alright, I'm going to open up to the public.
Thank you.
I'm going to open this up to the public for discussion. Before I do so, I do want to say that this, again, is remanded by Supreme Court to talk about hardship. I know that in the past, there was conversation about driveway, about ledge. That's planning board. That's not what we're here to discuss this evening. It's strictly the frontage issue and, and as it relates to that. So, is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against? Please come on down, sign in, state your name, please. Nope, no worries. Just, if you could sign in and then state your name for the record, please.
My name's Rhonda Tapley. I live at 65 Wilson Hill Road.
Okay, you just bring the mic closer to you, so. Thank you.
My name is Rhonda Tapley. My husband, John, and I own the property at 65 Wilson Hill Road. We're here to oppose the proposed variance for 63 Wilson Hill Road. We purchased our property 32 years ago, and under the regulations at that time, we could not subdivide our lot. We chose to sell the back portion to one of butters and built our home on the remaining section. Our home and the existing home at 63 Wilson Hill Road are both sited at approximately the same distance and elevation from the road. Both lots consist mainly of severe soils and lack sufficient road frontage to subdivide under current regulations. We do not have public water or sewer. Both lots have complex driveways. The location of each of our driveways has been determined by the topography and the ledge. Structurally, there is nothing about that lot that is any more unique than ours. There are no special conditions that make this property unique from other parcels or distinguish it from other properties in this area that are subject to the same constraints under the law. There are other lots in the area without the required frontage that are similar and fall under the same zoning restrictions. This property consists mainly of severe soils, is zoned for a single-family residence, and requires 250 feet of road frontage. The area is zoned that way for a reason. It's on poorly-drained severe soils near a river. It is not reasonable to create additional burden on the area for one single home by granting a variance. Arnie states that the frontage requirement accomplishes no reasonable purpose. Whether Arnie believes the frontage and other law and yard regulations are reasonable or valid is irrelevant. The town and its citizens have adopted these regulations, and they are deemed to be reasonable and fair as the standards apply to all properties. Many of us that live on similar properties have lived here for over 30 years. These regulations have not been a hardship. I recently spent hours at Town Hall, sifting through old planning and meeting minutes, researching frontage and soil requirements. Years ago, the people of this town met together to make decisions about how they wanted the town to develop. The citizens of the town struggled with how to keep up with developers building everywhere and could not keep up with the rising cost of services. Residents were selling their property to developers because they could not afford the taxes. Increasing the tax base came at a significant expense. They developed a master plan with areas for industry and single-family dwellings as well as multifamily units. They did not want the entire town overbuilt. They could not afford to bring water and sewer into every, every area every time a developer decided to build there. Various soil types were an issue. They could not overpopulate properties in areas with severe soils because they had no way to deal with septic issues, drainage, and storm runoff. They defined certain areas in order to manage building. I spoke to a previous Spilekman, who stated that the town decided that they wanted Wilson Hill Road to remain rural. They wanted the properties to have space from side to side. One of the quotes from the minutes that I read, you know, yesterday was, "It was the feeling of the board that higher density should be where public utilities are available, not out on Wilson Hill Road or Amherst Road." These are our concerns. Arnie cannot guarantee that the health, safety, or welfare of the neighboring properties will not be threatened. We have already reported water and well issues. Drilling for water may affect our water quantity or quality in an area where some of the neighbors have already lost water. That would result in significant hardship and expense to us. It would certainly negatively affect our property values. It has been recommended to us that if building proceeds, that all butters have our water quantity and quality tested as a baseline to prepare for litigation if necessary. The degree of slope on the front of the property is significant. Any building will potentially divert excess water onto the Foss property, into the seasonal stream, jam the culvert, or end up across the street on the Hayes or McCarthy property. Who will be responsible for the damage? Building on the hill near the Foss property could cause excess water, mud, and debris to end up on their property. Arnie cannot guarantee that it won't. Brett Vaughn was in the road a few weeks ago after the heavy rain, cleaning mud and debris out of the road. He had a pond of water on the slope of the Sauhegan side of the road. In this instance, the excess water will naturally flow toward the Foss property. Arnie cannot guarantee they won't have issues with rock and ledge and won't have to blast. In an effort to smooth out the surface of a small area of their driveway, the owners of the property at the bottom of our driveway had to pound rock for four days. Arnie does not intend to utilize the full 10.5 acres to properly site the home on its own five-acre section. It appears they are just planning to use the aggregate acreage to justify placing two homes on a lot that was intended to only support one home. And even if setback further, the home will likely end up in the same general area as the existing home, exacerbating the problems with soils, drainage, wells, and septic. Arnie believes that it's reasonable to subdivide and hide a second home in the woods. However, hiding a house in the woods does not address the severe soils, septic issues, drainage, and runoff. This property was in foreclosure for a year. There was a parade of builders, developers, contractors, and homeowners that considered purchasing it. The significant damage this house sustained was common knowledge. Any reputable builder does their due diligence before purchasing a property or purchases a property with contingencies that allow a period of due diligence. a section of their property. They declined the offer. Arnie then filed for a hardship. Variances are supposed to be granted for genuine hardships, not bad investments. If we relax this regulation in this extreme area and this variance is granted, we believe Arnie will return to request another variance to extend the easement and build more houses on the back of the lot. We are requesting that this board deny this application. Thank you.
So, a couple of things. I agree, I appreciate very much your testimony, and it was very well put together, and I do agree with some of the points that you've brought forward. You had mentioned yourself is looking, is being denied to expand your lot or to subdivide your lot. Did you go before the board? Or, I'm just kind of curious, who told you that it was denied?
What happened was, when we initially were looking at the land and we initially bought, you know, we're looking at buying the lot, actually, there was another builder in town that was interested in buying our lot. There was a competition between the two of us when we were buying the property. They wanted to subdivide it. And we looked at it and said, okay, we want to put a house up here. Can we subdivide this? I didn't even get as far as here. We were told straight up, you're not going to be able to do this. Anytime I even go to the building, even if you go to the building inspector's office, they'll tell you, if you wanted to have a mother-in-law's apartment, or you wanted to have a small house, or you wanted to put a second driveway in, we were told we could not do it. I never even got this far. And it was always very clear, you know, the fact that there were developers and builders and everyone else that looked at the property next door, even Brett Vaughn, who was building these huge houses off the other end of the street, went to the actual auction for this property, and they all walked out. They said, we don't want anything to do with this. It wasn't just the house. They knew that the property was going to be a significant problem.
So, you've been, you've been there, you said, for 30 years?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two years. So, the houses across the street that have kind of their average probably about 150-foot frontage, was that a larger, was that once a larger piece of land that was then subdivided down?
Yeah, Kevin, I'm trying to think, the neighbors that lived down there, they had a couple of lots. And that lot, I think, but when he sold his property, those lots got, those two lots got sold. But I think one of the homeowners of one of those lots, but yes, it was a larger parcel. I mean, initially, Greg's parents, you know, Betty and George lived diagonal, they abutted John and Mary, John Harris and Mary Foscone's property. That was a Richardson property, and the Richardson owned all of this land. And before he died, he subdivided it. The house that Robin sits in now, this is one little, one acre, was the parson for the church. Our house was supposed to be a Baptist church, because we were close to God, apparently, so up on the hill. I don't have a Baptist church up there. But anyways, the little house was down, that was given to the parson. And then the area that we bought was up on the top. So, the lots were then subdivided down a little bit. We don't have the same soil as the people across the street. I actually called Skilling's, and I talked to them this week, and I said, you know, what's the scoop? And I said, we're up on the hill, we're on the rock. I said, but we know that the people that are on the other side of the street, a lot of times, they have problems with their water. He said, usually the houses that are on the rivers have harder problems. He says, the strange part is, the people that are up on the top, he says, given the depth of your well, he said, because you're not, I don't have a super-deep well up there, it sits at 150 feet. He said, you're more at risk than a person who's got a well that's 1,000 feet deep. Because I asked him, I said, if they drill, you know, they can't guarantee anything, but Skilling's has been around forever. He said, your water is more at risk. So, the suggestion was that all the homeowners that are in the area, if you let this proceed, that we would have to have our water quantity tested and our water quality.
So, okay, so regarding placement of the house, runoff, the septic, placement of the septic, the wells, those are all planning board.
That's planning board, yeah.
So, that's, I have, myself and any of the board members here, none of us have any privy on that, because we're literally looking at the frontage. But it sounds like that there's, I mean, Wilson Hill Road has already been subdivided a lot across the street. Granted, you said that the soils are different. Where this, where they have, you know, they could, if, by doing the subdivision, or not subdivision, but by splitting the lot and making those two different frontages, in essence, they're still at, or if not more, than what's across the street. So, it's not, so the whole idea of putting a cluster development in there, I think it would be a little tough. It'd be more likely further down where you have a 10-acre parcel to do that, but...
No, they're not looking at that so much as the, is potentially building on the back of the lot. When you look at where this, where this house is looking at sight, look at the size of the lot. Okay, I've had builders look at this, and they said, usually what happens is when they set it up like this with an easement going like that, what they're trying to do eventually is, is address the back lot, which is what John Harris had talked to you about the last time, is a concern, it's not just going to be one house. Today, it's going to be an easement, and I think Mrs. LaRue brought that up the last time, was that one minute it's an easement, the next minute, you know, you're coming back and you're telling us you want to extend it, and you now want to do something to the back of the lot. If you look back in Lorraine McKinnon's file, you'll see that there was, there was a section in there where they talked about that, where they said, you know, years from now, and that was 30 years ago, we're going to be talking about back lot development.
No, I can understand.
And that's what people are trying to do. They're trying to get at the back, they're trying to get at the back of the lot. And this, if, you know, we can't compare, we cannot compare the McCarthy and the Hayes property to this. It's not even a comparison.
But what about the fact that it...
It is a comparison to mine, to John Harris, and to the Fosses, because we're on that side of the street.
Were you vocal in '89 when the variance? I was, I wasn't in the town in '89.
No, you asked me that the last time. When we bought our, we bought our property in '86, we didn't close on it until '88. And I don't recall Mrs. M. ever saying to me anything about, I don't recall that. What was happening was, we were in the middle of building, because we built the house ourselves. I was up to my eyeballs in slash and stuff, and I, you know, I couldn't have told you anything about anything. It was kind of odd, looking through all the records yesterday, because, I mean, everybody from Gene Weston and everybody else, I mean, these people that I knew them, you know, it's odd. But, yeah, history, there's a lot of it there.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak against this petition? Come on down.
Hi, I'm Julie Foss.
Hi.
I'm here to speak on behalf of my parents, Bill and Doris Foss.
Yes.
That are on the property at 55 Wilson Hill, and would be a direct abutter to this new subdivision if it's allowed.
Well, it's like, Greg, it's not a subdivision, they're just, they're splicing it up to put another house there, so, but go ahead.
All right. To the new, the new home, shall we say?
Divide it, yes.
Some of the serious concerns my parents have about the well, the runoff of the water used previously stated that cannot be addressed at this meeting, that's a planning board meeting, and I respect that. One of the things I am concerned about that is the change of characteristics of the neighborhood. To be honest, everybody who lives out on that rural road, which Wilson Hill Road is, lives out there because they want their privacy.
Right.
They, in all honesty, don't want to see their neighbors. They like them, but they don't want to see them, and that's it. This home would be within my parents' line of sight directly. My parents could see this from their back door, easily. So, I just want to effect that, that characteristics of the neighborhood is one of the things that it seems to be that variances can address.
It can, but in this particular case, we're addressing the frontage and not necessarily the characteristics.
All right, well, I just say my parents are opposed to this, and I will direct any other things at the planning board.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak against this petition? All right, I'm going to allow you to retort.
I appreciate that.
I want to make it clear that I understand some of the thoughts that are part of this. I also want to make clear, if we're talking about history, I'll try and stay away from speculation. When this lot was originally subdivided, I expect the owner, since we're speculating a little, had an expectation for the use. The frontage requirement back when, 1974, do we know what it was? 150 feet. I'll just so clear on that. I also want to make clear that the frontage that we're talking about has really nothing to do, nothing, with the actual lot. It really doesn't. We're, we meet the size criteria. I heard the part about the well, that's something for the planning board to look at. We will meet all of the current septic requirements. We need no waivers for septic. We're able to deal with it. This lot is distinguishable from the other lots. I've pointed it out to you. To suggest that you just say, oh, it's like everything, it's not like everything else. The amount of frontage, the nature of it, the slopes, and, again, I'm going to remind the board, you found hardship in 1989. It's the same lot, it didn't change. We're not going to subdivide the lot further. I'm going to repeat that. We are not going to subdivide the lot further. With the, with this information somehow came up that we're trying to get to the back of the lot and do something, I'll repeat it again. We are not subdividing it further. I want to make that clear. The proposal is the proposal, and that's on the record for the parties to listen to. We meet the standards. We plan to take a close look at drainage, that's a planning board issue, but I'll just remind the board of that, and that I need to. I, you know, I heard it. This lot was created in '74, the rules were changed. And I would point out that when we changed the rules on lot size, it was for, basically, soils issues, septic issues. We don't have that issue here. The lot is more than big enough, both lots, to satisfy those issues. What happened here is the big paintbrush came out. Contrary to what anybody may think, you can't look at every single lot in a rezoning proposal, especially a soils rezoning proposal that triggered the lot sizes that we're dealing with. This lot is different. This use is very reasonable. In fact, the court said it was a reasonable use. And we believe that the hardship clearly has been met. The other issues will be dealt with by the planning board, and we welcome a meeting with the planning board for that purpose. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members, we appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Attorney Michael. Is there any questions for Attorney Michael before I close the public hearing? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and open this up for discussion. And I'm going to ask... Attorney, um, Matt? Attorney Michael brought up something that I hadn't heard before, and just curious if this plays into the, and it does, I don't think it necessarily plays into the frontage, but talked about economic use as hardship.
Yeah, Attorney, Attorney Michael's not, not wrong. Financial hardship is a consideration. Financial investment, lack of an investment-backed return is a consideration courts apply when looking at hardship these days.
But doesn't apply to the fact that we're looking at frontage, obviously?
It's incorporated into any discussion of hardship, regardless of what it is you're looking at, because we're looking at a zoning issue when we're looking at hardship. But, you know, incorporated within that claim is normally money. It's to some degree. I bought land, can't do X, expected to do this, whatever, and here's my financial distress to speak, from not being able to proceed further, what my expectations were. It is not dispositive. What I mean by that is, it's not, you can't, you know, hit your start of that only and make your decision, but it is something that the board can consider. This is not unusual, you know, this kind of request, if you want to make a subdivision, it's, you know, large lots, you have a financial expectation, it's something you can consider. But again, it is not, by in and of itself, dispositive of the decision.
Okay.
If that answers your question.
That did, thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Lenny?
When I look at the, the overall neighborhood, or the miles on either side, this lot looks to me like it is unique on two things. First of all, the size of the lot is significantly larger than any of the other ones around with one or two exceptions. This one has more frontage than the other couple that are larger, so I think it does make it unique.
Okay.
We're talking about one lot being, frontage being acceptable, and the other one being a little less than what it, what we would otherwise require, but still significantly more than a lot of the other lots that are along that road. There's quite a few of those routes, particularly across the street. And I know soils comes into play, but it's still, you've got a lot more frontage there on both of those lots if they do this.
So, it sounds like you're more in favor.
Yes.
Fran?
I've got to agree with Lynn, looking at this, I really don't see that much of a problem.
Okay. Think that the planning board would be able to make a decision on drainage, sewage, all of that?
I would hope they can, yes.
Kathy?
I agree with you.
Drew? No, Kathy, okay. All right. I, I don't know, kind of on the fence. I agree with some of the points as far as the, what you're saying as far as the frontage and characteristics of the neighborhood. You do bring up a good point about the characteristics of the neighborhood, and I've been up to Wilson Hill Road many times. It is a very secluded area. I also believe that, you know, property owners in Merrimack or anywhere in the state have the right to do what they want to do with their property. Maybe the people, Arnie could open up a home business machine shop, which is, which is, you could put in Merrimack, and you could be running drill presses in there and making a lot of noise, and it would echo like you wouldn't believe up there. And he has every right to do that, because, or any neighbor up there does, because that's a, that's a home business that's allowed in Merrimack. So, I understand characteristic neighborhood, I really do, and I face that in my own neighborhood too, so I understand exactly where you're coming from on that. But then again, you know, the property owner does have the right to do what they want to do with their property as well, so.
Also, I'd just like to say one other thing. There's some items brought up of, in the future, what-ifs in the future, we can't deal with that, we can only deal with here and now.
Exactly, exactly. And so, if a house, if it is granted and they do go forward and put a house there, then they're going to have to come back, because they're going to figure out how they're going to put those other houses back there. Well, they got to figure, you know, they got to do that, and they're going to have to come up with a variance, and it doesn't mean that those are going to get approved. And we have denied variances based on people making investments on properties that you just can't build a house on. We actually had something like that last month, I think. So, what I'm going to do at this point is, I'm going to ask for a motion.
All right, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we grant the variance to Arnie LLC, petitioner-owner, under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a two-lot subdivision with one lot having 159.22 feet of frontage where 250 feet is required. This petition was remanded back to the zoning board by the Hillsborough County Superior Court. The parcel is located at 63 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 Residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 4B, Lot 130, Case 2018-02.
Can I have a second? Seconded by Kathy.
Can we add a condition, please? Can we add a condition, please?
Oh, yes.
Should the board vote to grant the variance, staff recommends the following condition be attached. The petitioner shall obtain planning board approval for the proposed subdivision.
Any further, thank you, any further discussion, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? That is 401. Thank you very much. You do have 30 days for someone to appeal. Attorney Michael? Thank you. Next is Alan Brewster, petitioner-owner, variance under Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit an attached garage addition three feet from the side property line, whereas 15 feet is required. The parcel is located at 1 Mahu Road in the R Residential District, Tax Map 6A-2, Lot 079-01, Case Number 2018-11. Have you just signed it?
Matt?
Matt? Next is Alan Brewster, petitioner-owner, variance under Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit an attached garage addition three feet from the side property line, whereas 15 feet is required. The parcel is located at 1 Mayhew Road in the R Residential District, tax map 6A-2, Lot 079-01, Case Number 2018-11. Have you just signed in?
Matt?
Matt? Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Hi. How you doing?
Hello.
Forgive me. We won't be as eloquent as the prior...
That is okay.
Never done this before, so we'll appreciate any guidance you can provide.
Well, why don't... why don't we... why don't you start with your names and your address?
Fair enough. I'm Alan Brewster. This is my wife, Kira Brewster. We are from 1 Mayhew Road in Merrimack.
Actually, you know what? I'm just realizing, I never sworn in before. All right. Everybody raise your right hand if you're going to plan to speak tonight. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you've got?
I do.
Thank you. That is my mistake. Oops.
Did you sign in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you?
I did. Both of us on one line, it's fine. Thank you.
We'll see. If it comes back, we'll see. So, yes, so you can say your name, your address, and basically give us kind of a... give me a five-minute summary. What are we looking at here?
We are looking at property on 1 Mayhew Road, 2003. We've applied for a permit to add a garage to the side of the house. In that discussion with the folks downtown, in the next building, it was discussed for future plans, to which this situation brings us here today. Complete misunderstanding from approval through... I'm not familiar with this stuff, as I should be, or could be, I guess. It was mentioned that we would add this bay down the road when finances would allow us. We went into that process and did that. It was called to our attention that it wasn't on the original permit, so here we are, applying for the variance.
But this was on the original plans?
Believe it was.
Okay.
It was discussed and laid out, and it's been on our tax map for years, years and years.
Okay. Just real quick. Variance, not equitable waiver?
No. The issue is the step back.
Okay. Okay. No worries. So why don't we do this? You have the five criteria that were laid out.
Yes, sir.
If you could just read those into record and stop after each one in case we have any questions.
Good enough.
Thank you.
Okay, granting the... number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. We feel the additional bay would not cause any findable diminution to any of the surrounding properties. The bay is beautifully built and enhances the look of the value and value of the property of 1 Mayhew Road and its surrounding properties. The additional bay provides coverage for belongings and keeps the area aesthetically neat and orderly. We believe it will also add even more value to the abutters.
Any questions on that? Number two.
Number two. The spirit of the ordinance is observed, and again, forgive me, I'm not as eloquent as the former.
That's okay. That's okay.
The added bay observes the spirit of the ordinance by providing an enclosed space for storage of vehicles and lawn equipment, thus adding to the aesthetics of the neighborhood. It does not jeopardize any safety or health of the surrounding areas. The bay has a low profile and doesn't cast any undue shadows or otherwise detract from the area's natural light.
Any questions? Number three?
Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice. With a family of five drivers, this bay allows for less vehicles and other clutter to fill the driveway, thus detracting from the curb appeal of the residence. The additional bay has been instrumental in keeping our cars and boat protected from weather, as well as keeping our yard nice-looking and orderly. Our main goal in building this bay is to keep our investments protected that we have worked so hard to afford.
Questions on that? Number four.
For the following reasons, the values of the proper... the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. This additional bay does not detract, but actually enhances the value and appearance of the property. The added bay was completed to match the existing house and garage, including windows and siding. And I'll pause at this moment. We provided pictures. I hope you all have them. Bingo. Got them all.
Yep.
Great. We cannot see any way that this would diminish the property or any of the surrounding properties. We work very hard to keep the yard looking neat and orderly. Curb appeal is important to us, as we are the first house on Mayhew Road that people see. We hold that in high regard to give our neighborhood a nice appearance, nice aesthetics.
Any questions on the number four? Number five?
Number five. Skip to my answer?
That would be fine. It's unnecessary hardship.
Okay. We are requesting a side setback variance for our current added bay. We built our two-car garage addition in 2003. We discussed our plans with the town at the time about adding another bay down the road. We were under the impression that the bay was looped into that permit, which was received in 2002, as it has been shown on the tax map. Given the location and the use of our house, our land, the house, the yard, the septic system, and the driveway, the area where the bay was built is the only available spot on the property. This was an honest oversight on our part, and we'd like to make the necessary arrangements to make it right, the town, and pay the proper paperwork in place.
Number two?
And number two, we feel that this is reasonable, as the bay is used for our boat, cars, yard equipment, and tools. It promotes a clean, organized, and uncluttered appearance to the property and the neighborhood.
Any questions? I feel unnecessary hardships have been met? Okay. I guess my first question is, it looks like you got a fence between your... the bay and your neighbor's yard.
Yes.
How do you... I mean, and the bay's been there for a while. Is your... have your neighbors okay with that, or...
That fence has been there for...
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years.
Okay.
The bay's been up for a garage...
No, I guess what I'm saying is, have your neighbors made any comments about the bay, or...
Well, we have seven abutters. One, I believe, is here to speak against, which is a recent development. It's been, for a long time, never a problem. Never been an issue, hasn't been brought up in the past. We had a cordial discussion, cordial discussions and conversations at many times, being direct neighbors, through snowstorms and whatnot and rainstorms. This has recently, very recently, become an issue.
What is the... and when did you build the bay? You said that you got it... you thought it was looped in with the 2002 permit.
Correct.
What did... what did you... when did you build it?
The roof was put up maybe five, six years ago.
Okay.
It's been up a while. And then we put sides on it this summer.
So there was a... there was... so you said you put sides on it? So, okay, was... he's in the roof.
So is this... I'm sorry, was this more like a carport at one point?
It was originally, yes. It's framed out as a post, post and beam carport.
Uh-huh.
With intention of driving, of filling... I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
French.
That's okay.
Putting partitions, putting the walls up, making it blend. We didn't feel... we put a... we have a rather... have a professional ski boat. It's expensive. We like to keep it protected in the winter.
Of course.
Having it up with tarps and whatnot just detracts from everything that we believe in for the neighborhood. So we made it blend and made it fit nice.
Okay.
As finances allowed us to.
So at that point, as long as it was a carport, there was no problem?
Correct.
Do we have the plan from... we don't have the plan for 2002 to permit plan? And there's nowhere else on the property to put it? I see your septic is off to the...
Correct.
Right of the house. If you're facing it, it's off to the right. Okay. Obviously, you don't want to be driving over that.
The carport is on the tax map.
Yes.
It is.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Okay. I'm going to open this up to the public for the hearing, so people can come down. And is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this variance? Does anybody like to speak against this variance? Would you come on down? Are you sworn in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Just making sure.
I'm new at this, too, so excuse me.
That's okay. You could just... no, have a seat right there. You could just sign in and then say your name and address for the record.
All right. My name is Stephen McMahon. I live at 3 Mayhew Road.
Okay.
That butts right next to Alan. And I bought my house probably three years... I mean, not three years, 10 years ago.
Okay.
I've been there 10 years. And when I did buy my house 10 years ago, it was in the town of Merrimack. And I feel now, it feels like... I don't know if that has changes at the city of Merrimack, or is it still the town of Merrimack?
As far as I know, it's still the town of Merrimack.
Still the town of Merrimack, okay. Because that's one of my arguments is, with this being three feet, it is so close to my home that I'm... it's just feels like I'm living in the city. I can literally touch it from my fence.
Right. It does appear to be close to the fence, yes.
Yes. And the garage itself is being used as a main entrance to the home. So it has a lot of foot traffic. So my living room window is... so I'm 14 and a half feet, so my living room window is 17 and a half feet from this new garage, third garage that was added on here.
So 10 years ago, you moved in?
Yes.
And there was just what? Just a carport there?
There was nothing there.
There was nothing there?
There was nothing.
Okay.
Not even a cement slab.
Oh, okay.
So if I could, I didn't have like a big board for pictures or anything.
That's okay.
But I have a picture here.
We can't accept anything there. I apologize.
Oh, really?
Can't accept anything new, but you can describe what you're...
Well, yeah, because the way that the grade is about three and a half feet up that fence.
Uh-huh.
So when I'm... when I'm on my side of that fence, if he's on his side of the fence, the grade is a six-foot fence. The grade goes halfway up the fence.
Right.
So I have a three-foot grade now, because it was a... they came in and filled it with gravel, and they poured a...
But the fence has been there longer than you've owned that house.
Yeah. The fence was always there.
Okay.
Yeah, the fence was always there. But now that the grade... they literally poured gravel right up to the fence, three feet high.
Right.
And poured the slab. So now I have an elevation of three feet right next to my fence, right next to my septic and leach field.
Okay.
And so now with that carport... I also have a question. Like the carport, they're saying it's three feet from the fence. Does that include the overhang of the roof?
Kelly, is that overhang, or is that the...
It looks like it.
Overhang. So it'd be... the overhang.
Okay, so the overhang. So the drip edges dripping three feet from my property line with a three-foot-high grade height of mine, so everything is coming onto my property, all the water, because we live on a dirt road with no...
Huh.
With no sewage or drainage at all, no public sewage or drainage. Also, I noticed when I received information, the letter in the mail, about all this, the rear setback at 40 feet, it doesn't even meet.
Well, I...
I know, we were not discussing...
I can't speak for that.
Yeah.
That's not actually a discussion. And I don't know what, you know, when they got it approved in 2002, it was a different board. I don't know what was approved or wasn't approved in 2002. So... but I... no, I understand. As far as rear setback, it's not something we're looking at this evening.
Well, yeah, I was just doing my homework, and I just noticed it...
Okay.
It didn't comply with the rear setback also.
Okay.
I mean, the three-foot setback is really, really close for being in the town of Merrimack. And that's where I thought, you know, I bought a house in the town of Merrimack with my family and my wife, and I love Merrimack. And we also live on... we have lake rights to Babuza Lake. Now, I feel like I'm in the city, having three... having it three feet away from the property line and being used as a main entrance.
So you're in this house right here. This is their house. You're in this house right here?
Correct.
The house right there, okay. So when I'm looking at this map, and granted, it's an aerial...
Can I look at the...
By the way, don't you grab the mic? All right. That's you, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So based upon this picture, this one here, he's in that house right there.
I'm not... I bought right next to the...
Because it looks like, you know, it looks like your house ends, and it looks like you got about... because you've got a lot of trees there. I guess I can't see... I obviously can't see the trees, but it looks like you got about 10 feet between your house and the fence?
About that, yeah.
Okay. So it's... so your house is 13 feet from the...
From...
Is it 14?
Yeah.
14. 14 feet.
Yeah, 14 feet.
Okay.
Give or take.
And so with the roof on that, you're having what? Water coming down in the yard?
Yeah, because... yeah, because the whole... his grade is three feet higher than my yard. The original grade used to be three feet lower on his side of the fence.
So in essence, that could be solved with a gutter. Like if they put a gutter along the side of that, that water wouldn't come in your yard. That water would just...
Well, what about the...
I understand the three feet.
Twelve-foot of snowpack in the wintertime. I mean, we even had the town grader stuck in our road. It gets so muddy over there.
That's... I'm looking at... right now, I'm just looking at the three-foot side driveway.
Right.
I can understand, yeah, some of the roads in Merrimack are probably a little tough to get through.
Yeah, yeah. We're on a dirt road.
I get that.
We don't mind it, because no one speeds down that road.
But if they were to put a gutter on that road... on a gutter on the road... if they were to put a gutter, sorry, on that roof, that would...
We, we don't mind it, cause no one steers down that road.
But if they were to put a gutter on that road, on a gutter on the road, if they were to put a gutter, sorry, on that roof. That would, I mean, obviously, that would go within, that would go fir- a little bit closer to the fence, but that would take care of any runoff.
Just from the roof.
From the roof.
But what about all this, the cement that's all the way around it and all the way in front of it?
Well, that, I, I.
And it's, and it's three feet from my property line, that's. And my septic, in my leach field is five feet away from there. So it's right at the eight-foot limitation.
Okay.
And we are in the, in the um. We are, what is that, the uh?
The aquifer?
The R two soil district.
Yep, you are.
So, we have no. No um, public sewage, so if I have a septic problem. I, I, I'm gonna have to put a ten-foot raised tank to, to rectify this situation.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is that garage anywhere on your leach field? Or is it, do you have some leeway in there?
It's not on my leach field.
It's not on the leach field itself?
Very, very, very close.
Well, how close would you say?
Eight feet.
Within eight feet of your leach field?
Yes. And like I said, I mean. I mean, I thought, I bought a house in the town of Merrimack and having this right next to my house.
If it, if it's eight feet, that means that your leach field is five feet from the.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, I'm not a hundred percent, but I'm pretty sure. Yeah.
How did that?
I mean, that's how I bought the house. That's like my house being ten feet from the fence, I mean, I didn't have the fifteen feet, I mean, that's how the house was when I bought it ten years ago.
Right, I, I just, it, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just, I'm looking, I'm looking at the map, unfortunately, I can't see your, your property, I mean, it looks like you have some circular fence, circular or something.
My pool?
Pool.
Yeah, I got pool.
And that pool is, looks like it's almost right on top of your leach field. If I'm looking at this correctly.
No, you're looking at, my, my pool's way on the other side of the yard.
Alright.
That pool was there when I bought.
Okay.
Bought the place ten years ago.
Right. Yeah, no, and, and that's, cause if that, yeah, if that's the pool, and I'm not, I don't wanna get into, I, I mean, I just, it just, it's, you're, it's an interesting place for your. Your sewer to be, I don't know how they.
See, I wish I, I didn't know that you had the cement.
No, I don't, I don't know how they got that, that squeezed in there, cause based on the regulations for where septic and the leach field has to go, that would be kinda.
Well, I don't know when, when his house was built or what the regulations were at that time.
I couldn't find any documentation on it.
That would require additional research.
I mean, my tank is right there.
Possible, there's a leach field right there? Yeah, leach field is right there.
Well, my guess is the leach field is up in this area, but I don't know for a fact.
Okay. Alright, um, any further questions? Any further comments you'd like to make, sir?
I mean, I think I covered everything, really, like I said, I'm, I feel like now I'm living in the city of Merrimack.
Yeah, I, I know, you, you said that a couple times.
Honestly, ever since it's been built, we have nothing, nothing but problems with the neighbors. Because it's right there, I mean, they use it as their main entrance, they, it's just, it feels like city living. And I have lake rights and.
Yep.
I'm proud to be an uh, resident of the town of Merrimack.
I agree with you, alright, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there, actually, hold on, is there anybody else that like, no, you're, you're good. Is there anyone else that like to speak against this petition? Alright, if you'd like to come back up, you can rebut.
Okay, thank you.
So when did you say the carport was built?
We put the roof on, had to be five, seven, five, six years ago, maybe seven?
Okay.
Hard to, I don't.
And then you put sides on it?
This summer.
This summer.
When, when was the slab put in?
I don't even recall, it's been, it's been a long time. It's been a while, I don't have an answer for that.
Okay. You, would you like to re-?
Yes, he brought up a lot of things, um, and I appreciate that, he's, you know, proud member to, proud to be a member of Merrimack, I grew up in this town. Been here fifty-one years. I get it, I understand Merrimack. I also understand my family and that's why we did, we're doing what we do and we're still living here, proud to be here. In a way, served the country, came back, here I am, um, all that good stuff. As far as, one of the things he's bringing up is the, the water runoff, and you kindly brought up a gutter, um, which we've talked about doing. Um, if you can, if I could get you to refer to picture. I think it's the last one showing from the side. This elevation, um, I guess we'll put the, the grade, as he put it, a walkway. Is made of gravel, it's designed to leach the water. So as it wa- as it flows off, it drops straight down into there, we did not pave it, we did not concrete, we did not put pavers. With the intention it can leach into the ground over three feet before it distributes and goes anywhere else. We did consider that, we did process it, what we feel appropriately. That is fortified and blocked up to add stability to the whole building. So that, I think, and, and we have no problem putting a gutter on, a gutter up as well. The fence is something that, that we installed. In ninety-five, ninety-four, a long time ago, a very long time, it's very old. In my opinion, it does, probably could tolerate to be replaced. His, if one of his complaints, if he had come to me and said, here's a complaint. You're high, you can see right in our yard, or, or, you know, whatever his complaint was. We have considered and will consider putting an eight-foot fence in, that will give him his barrier of space and visibility. We don't have a problem doing that. As, as good neighbors should, maybe we can even split it.
Right. I'm just looking at the angle and some of the rain we've had, I could see that stuff, you know. Sometimes not even dripping off, but just going off the side, but I, I get what you're saying about the three-foot area where you have the rocks in there to permeate the, the ground, I, I get that.
We did that with design and intention to not disturb the neighbors, any neighbors, anywhere.
So, in, in this picture, this back picture here, you have a living, you have a window in the back, right? That's, there's nothing, I mean, there's, there a window?
There's two windows.
Ah, okay. So, there's no living space there, right now?
It's, it's dry stud inside.
So it's just a, just ventilation?
It's literally, yeah, exactly, to run it, to allow it to run through.
Okay.
Uh, as far as being a, a, a lot of foot traffic, with three people currently living in our house, my two boys are off at college, they're home in the summers. Not a boatload of traffic going through there. We went through, you can see in one of the pictures, the, we went through the expense of the door. At a door, so as to not have it enter on the side into his face. We were cognizant of that too, and had the door in the front.
So the only, the only question I have is that, and I do appreciate you coming forward, because if you hadn't come forward on this, I mean, obviously, this could have continued and nobody. I mean, you, you came forward for the variance and seeking.
Oh, absolutely.
Because you wanna do the right thing.
I'm a long-time resident of this town, I don't.
I, no, and I, and I respect that, cause you, you, quite frankly, you didn't have to, uh, I mean, well.
Fair.
Not you didn't have to, but you know what I'm saying, it's like, you come forward, but um.
Which picture are you referring to?
Um, no, I'm looking at the house in general, in general, I'm just, my only thing is, is that, you know, is the, is, is just the original plans. And, and what I, I would have liked to have seen the original plans to kinda give a better idea to make a decision on this. But no, I, I do understand where you're coming from, any other, any further questions? Please, by all means.
Is this, this is the door in question?
Inside the garage door, yes ma'am.
This one?
And it's on, it's on the starboard side of the door?
I see that, but this area here would be where you would normally park your cars, when you come in and you go out.
They, we park the cars in the garage.
Oh, you park cars in the garage?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that's, exactly. Who's going in and out this door that's causing a problem?
My daughter.
Oh, okay, so she, she doesn't get garage parking, she has.
That's correct.
It's, you gotta have priority.
Exactly.
The boat.
Exactly.
She's young, she can handle it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at your picture here.
Tall picture, yes ma'am.
Between the, the, the garage and the, the fence, and if I'm reading this correctly, I bring that line straight down. The water coming off the roof doesn't even go near the fence, it goes into that sand and gravel that you have there.
That is correct.
It doesn't even touch the fence.
That's correct, if there's nowhere near it with the fence, none.
Right.
My question is, if this variance isn't accepted. What's the consequence, what needs to happen?
Kelly?
Uh, we'd have to take enforcement action, because we have actually received a, an informal complaint. So we would need to figure out how we're gonna remediate this. Whether it mean take the.
So potentially that.
Down or.
That individual structure and, and that cement landing would have to go, is the landing included in the uh?
We're just talking about the structure itself, not, not necessarily the cement landing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'm sorry, yep, one more, yep.
To, just to address, I looked at my wife's notes here, um, he brought up a forty-foot setback. This is a non-conforming lot, we have frontage on both sides, so we've got fifteen and fifteen. You knew that.
Not gonna worry about that.
Alright.
One thing at a time.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, but no, I understand. So, uh, start with Lenny, any comments, questions on this? You good, got everything you need? Any comments on this? Okay. Any comments on this? You good, Lynn?
I'm sorry, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
The cement pad. Was that installed when you installed the carport, the roof?
No.
Was it prior?
Yes, ma'am.
So the pad's been there for a while.
Yes, ma'am.
Installed the roof, and then you put the sides on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Three different times, okay. I, I'm looking at the tax map, and without seeing the actual plans. The fact that this is listed on the tax map. Leads me to believe that, um, if it wasn't part of the plans. That this was, was an innocent, um, misunderstanding. Um, the fact that it's, the rest of it has been there for so long. There's, there's no other place to, to do that on this property. So I think in order to accomplish it, I think we do have a hardship here.
Would agree. I also think that, uh, you know, it, since it is on the tax map and it's tax map of record, it's been on record for a while.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, yeah, I, I, I get where the variance is coming from, but uh, it, you know.
All, all of these houses in that area are, are all non-conforming, there's very few in, down there that are conforming. Because of how it was built initially. All of them, all of the houses are close to their property lines. It, it just seems reasonable to me.
Fran?
I think, uh, there was some sort of misunderstanding and it, since it has been included on the tax map. I don't see a problem.
Kathy? Can I have a? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I, uh, I would bring the, make a motion to the board that we grant Alan Bruce the petition, owner variance. On the section three point zero five of the vo- zoning ordinance to permit and attach garage addition three feet from the side property line. Whereas fifteen feet is required. The parcel is located at one May Road in the R two residential district, tax map six A dash two. Lot zero seven nine dash zero one, case number two zero one eight dash three three.
Second.
Seconded by Fran? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, staying five zero zero. Thank you very much for your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Can you give some guidance, what, what's next?
Uh, next, well, it has been approved, there can be, there's a thirty-day period in which an appeal can be made. Um, and then Kelly can fill you in with anything else that you need, but it, it, at this point, it has been approved, but you do have thirty days in which somebody can appeal. Have a good evening.
So nothing for you to do. Nothing for you to do.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Joe and Teresa Machado, petitioner. Uh, Y, Y Red Barn LLC owner, special exception under section, did I say that right?
Yeah, sure.
We kinda played with the words, we're not sure ourselves whether it's Wired Barn or Wired.
Wired, 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 I, I guess I needed, I look, I saw Y red, it should have been Wired Barn. Wired Barn, okay, we'll go with Wired Barn LLC owner, sorry about that, special exception under section. Two point zero, two point three C one of the zoning ordinance to permit the use of an existing single-family dwelling. To continue on a commercially zoned parsh- commercially zoned parcel. That is being proposed for commercial use. The parcel is located at three Wire Road in the C two general commercial flood hazard conservation. And aquifer conservation districts, tax map five D dash three lot one zero nine, case number two thousand eighteen. Dash twenty-four. Evening.
Hi, how are you? We're new at this too, so.
That's, alright, so we can start by signing in and, yeah, don't worry about it. You start by signing in and stating your name.
Uh, Teresa Machado.
And Joe Machado.
Okay, and uh, I got your name right because I watched the World Series.
There you go.
No relation, huh?
No, that's a good thing, right?
Yeah. So we're looking for a special exception, you have, uh, why don't you give us kind of a, a brief overview of what we're looking at? And then we'll have you get into the, uh, the criteria.
Okay, so, um, we purchased the property two weeks ago. We're looking to convert it into a residential with a dog daycare. It's, um, it's kind of a different type of property, it's a, it's got a, it's a three-level home. With the barn. And I just totally lost my train of thought.
And, and you're looking to put the doggy daycare in the barn?
Yes, on the bottom level of the barn.
On the bottom level, okay, what's on the top level of the barn?
Uh, right, just storage.
Storage, okay. And a three-bedroom home, are, are you the sole residents, or is there?
Uh, we actually, we have, uh, two girls who will be living and running the facility, they will be co-owners and they will run the facility and live at the house.
Okay, was Kelly, was this the same, is this, is no relation to the doggy daycare that we heard about?
No, it's no relation, but it's very similar.
Okay, I heard about one last month, so. Alright, so why don't we, uh, why don't we go through the special exception? We'll stop after, you, uh, A, B, C, and D, stop after each one in case there's any questions, please?
Okay. You want me to read the question also?
You can read, yeah, you can read A and then read your answer.
Okay, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use or uses in terms of overall community development, because. This property is a perfect location for a dog daycare, cause it is positioned so that there are no residential neighbors bordering the areas in which the dogs will be. This location is right between the commercial area of Daniel Webster Highway and the residential area of Wire Road. Making a perf- a perfect property to be zoned as a mixed-use commercial residential. This area is a great central location with easy access from all around town.
How many, um. How many dogs do you, or how big, how many dogs do you plan on?
We're thinking about twenty to twenty-five.
Okay. And do you, do you have an outs- outside space for them as well?
Yes, yes, the idea would be a fence and the yard down below.
Okay.
I'm just curious, is this just gonna be day, uh, dog day, doggy daycare? Or is it also gonna be grooming, et cetera?
No, it would just be daycare, uh, possibly boarding, but we're not looking to make it like a, a huge facility. So if the dogs were going there for daycare, and let's say the owners were going away for the weekend, that they could stay for the weekend, or they could stay overnight. But no plans on like soliciting as like a full boarding or anything, just the daycare, the possibility of boarding for those customers only.
Any other questions? B?
The use as developed would not adversely affect the neighborhood, because as this property is located between Wire Road and Daniel Webster Highway. There is a pre-existing level of traffic and white noise. We are proposing a small facility much closer to a home daycare than a large commercial facility. An excessive amount of barking results from dogs who are stressed or uncomfortable in the daycare environment. Our goal is to accept only dogs that are a hundred percent comfortable in this type of setting. Our research shows that there is a need in Merrimack community for this type of a service.
Questions? Uh, C?
There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, because. Dog daycare facilities are unique and that customers are only at the business an average of one to four minutes. We intend to schedule designated drop-off and pickup times throughout the day, so that there are not multiple people dropping off and picking up, therefore reducing the amount of traffic.
Okay. Um, how much parking space do you have or, uh, outside the facility, or will you have?
There's about seven right now.
Seven?
Six or seven.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm looking at the map, so, okay. Um, alright, uh, D?
Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the, of the proposed uses or uses, because. As the property owners, we have worked in the pet care industry for ten years plus. And the two individuals who will manage and co-own this business have each worked in the pet care industry for seven-plus years. Including years of experience in training and in separate day, dog daycare facilities. We aim to be a place where small groups of dogs who get along well can play in a safe and happy environment. From our experience in this field, our goal is to create a more home-like, stress-free environment. So it, we're hoping to create sort of this little, small kind of a niche facility, where you're dropping your dog off at someone's home, not. You know, at a big facility, uh, we wanna keep it personal. The two girls are very experienced at this, they've worked at multiple daycares. They have some really great ideas, they love dogs more than life, I think. And, um, so, right, so the goal is to really keep it homey.
Kelly, a special exception is permitted, it would then, this would have to go to the planning, correct?
Yes, you need to go to planning board if this is approved.
Um, any questions? Okay, we're gonna open this up to the public.
Okay.
So is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Close the public hearing. Any final questions, actually, any final questions before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, any discussion items, Kathy? Fran?
Nope, none at all.
Uh, question for Kelly. If they were proposing to use this strictly as a commercial venture. They would have to go to planning board for site approval, et cetera.
Correct.
But they wouldn't be coming to us. The only reason they're coming to us is to allow. The people to live in the property.
Right.
When it becomes commercial.
Correct.
Which they're doing now.
For the mixed use, correct.
Alright, uh, Lenny? Any questions? Lynn? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, make a motion to accept Joe and Teresa Machado's petition. And Wired Barn LLC owner, special exception under section two point zero, two point three. See one of the zoning ordinance to permit the use of an existing single-family dwelling. To continue on a commercially zoned parcel that is also being proposed for commercial use. The parcel is located at three Wire Road in the C two general commercial flood hazard conservation aquifer. Conservation districts, tax map. Five D dash three lot one oh nine, case two thousand eighteen dash thirty-four. And this is a special exception. Is the applicant shall obtain a site plan approval from the planning board for the proposed mixed use on the site.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Lenny, be sure, Lenny, second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstain, five zero zero. You have thirty days in which somebody can appeal, otherwise congratulations and good luck on your adventure.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Um, next, moving light along, is Yin.
Zhang.
Zhang, Zhang. Petitioner and Christopher Ross owner variance under section three point zero, eight point eight of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a single family residence on an existing lot of record that is part of the cluster development without access to municipal sewer. The parcel is located at fifteen Tinker Road in the R four residential and aquifer conservation districts, tax map two B lot two ninety-three dash zero one, case number two thousand eighteen dash thirty-five. Um, have both you gentlemen been sworn in?
Uh, no.
No.
Can you raise your right hands real quick? Sorry, I tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help you got? That's my right hand, right hand, thank you very much. Alright, if you could, uh, state your name, sign in, state your name for the record?
Chris Ross, uh, fifteen Tinker Road.
Okay.
Nathan Chamberlain, do you still have the mic?
Actually, you wanna grab the mic if you're gonna be standing, please.
While he's setting up, so I don't take up the board's too much time.
Bring, bring the mic a little closer.
We got it.
While they're setting up, if you'd like to give us kind of an overview of what we're looking at.
Yeah, yeah, so that we're not taking the board's too much time. Basically, uh, I had, I own Synergy Self-Storage and the Vision Care Building in Town. And, uh, I had purchased the, uh, Tinker Road property to build a home because I've been wanting to get into Merrimack and, uh, the property fifteen Tinker Road had a, an old barn on it. I think many of you will recall. Um, and I had spent some time, uh, carrying costs and research to try and, uh, rehab that barn. And, uh, I got, uh, four different contractors in there and, uh, the cost to basically raise it, move it, and put a foundation under it, and then put it back, uh, was gonna cost me somewhere around a hundred grand.
Okay.
Once all the, was said and done, so, um, I, I ended up taking the back step and spent two years, uh, carrying those costs to, uh, try and find a home for that barn because anybody would just knock it down and put it in a dumpster. Uh, we found a buyer, uh, who paid a hun- a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars to, uh, come in and take it down piece by piece and move it to New Ipswich, New Hampshire, uh, where they basically took all the pegs, all the boards, and put them in dry kill and just left it there. And they're gonna put it up on a property in New Ipswich. Uh, that took about two and a half years from start to finish. Ironically, the gentleman owns a foundation company, um, Anchor Foundation, so.
Okay.
It worked out to his benefit, so. The home for the barn is completed and, uh, now comes the lot. Over that time, I just got to, uh, watching the property and I just decided that I wanted a bigger lot in Merrimack and, uh, decided to put it on the market. And, um, this gentleman behind me has decided he'd like to purchase it. And he's wanting to do something different from what I wanted to do, so, uh, we've hired Fieldstone to basically, uh, do the homework and make sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, which seems we have, and he's here to present that tonight.
So you're no, so, uh, you're not building, you're not building your own personal house there?
Not on that lot, uh, I've got a lot in Merrimack that I'm working with right now and, uh, and that's where I'd like to leave that, but, yeah, thanks.
That's a question. Um, thank you. You wanna just, uh?
Sure.
Make sure you sign in, state your name, and... If you wanna, we can go into, right into the five points of law and.
Sure.
Stop after each one for any questions.
Alright. Oh, thank you. If, uh, I could just do a brief overview of the, is that my over there?
Yep, you grab the mic and you be outside.
Alright, um, just mentioned, it's a, it's a lot over here on Tinker Road and this lot was initially part of an open space subdivision? Uh, cluster subdivision, and so it needs to fall, it falls under all the criteria of the cluster subdivision. This was approved back in nineteen eighty-eight. I know the narrative mentions, uh, nineteen ninety-eight, but it's technically approved in nineteen eighty-eight when dormant. Didn't get built late in ninety-eight or whatever, but anyway. So here's the overall subdivision here, and this is the lot we're, we're talking about. And as part of the open space requirements, you need to have a one hundred foot landscape buffer around the perimeter of the parent parcel.
Yes.
So the orange line here represents that one hundred foot landscape buffer around the parent parcel. That's why it goes off the sides here, because that's, I imagine that's the open space of the overall development. And so we're down in here, it doesn't really, it's more like a conventional lot than it is an open space lot. Got frontage on Tinker Road, doesn't have any frontage on Homestead Road. It doesn't have any of the utilities stubbed into it from Homestead Road. So that's why we're here tonight, so. One of the other unique circumstances here, and here's an area view. Give you a sense, I know there's a, there's a, uh, web soil survey map in your packet. That area that's on that map is a little old, so this is what it looks like currently. And so the, this is the landscape buffer that we're here to petition. And this is the next closest house here. It's about three hundred and forty feet between where we'd like to put the septic system and this house.
Where, where, so, actually, on that map right there, um, because that actually has the road on it, which is, I wanna see. Where are you, so this is not part of the cluster development?
It is part of the cluster.
It is, okay, so, if I remember correctly, and it's been a while, when we approved the cluster development, we actually heard about this barn, and it, it, is, is, am I remembering that correctly or am I getting confused with another one?
Well, the cluster was approved thirty years ago.
Okay, alright, so then I am getting confused with something else, never mind, I apologize. Where, and where is the house gonna go on there?
Right here, the, the tan.
Uh-huh.
This is the buffer here, there's a landscape setback.
And where's the septic gonna go?
Right here, can't really see it, that's a little, the little green spot there.
Okay, so the septic is still with, eh, behind the landscape buffer?
That's what we, that's the petition is, because we wanna put the septic within the buffer. It's a landscape, yeah.
That's the other one, I got it, yeah.
Right. So, we have two issues. The first issue is that in order to do a cluster subdivision, you need to be on municipal water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
The, the rest of the houses are on the municipal water and sewer, but they were built twenty years ago or whatever. And now the pump station that this all flows to is over capacity, and so the town is telling us we cannot tie into that pump station.
Okay.
So that's the reason we need to get a variance to be allowed to put a septic system on this lot.
That's the second one. The first one is be able to put the house on the lot.
No, not the house, the septic system.
Okay.
So if you look at this map, the house. Most of the, most of the improvements are within, this orange line is the landscape buffer. So most of the improvements are outside of that buffer. We have a little bit of the driveway and the leach field and a septic, you know, septic system within the buffer.
Yeah, okay.
All the rest of these homes are on the other side.
Right, no, I understand.
We only have, really, really only impact in this one of butter over here.
That's what.
And he's three hundred and forty feet away.
Alright, I mixed up the variances, I thought we were hearing the, the landscape one first, I apologize.
Septic first.
Septic first, I thought we were hearing landscape first, I had it backwards.
I mean, they really go hand in hand, so.
Um, alright, well, why don't we get into the, uh, the criteria?
If I may?
Yes, please.
If you want, you can take them up at the same time because one is contingent upon the other. It's your decision, if you, however you wanna vote on it.
I, I prefer to do one at a time because if they don't get the first one, then the second one becomes moot.
Mm-hmm.
So, why don't we just do them one at a time for the moment? Um, okay?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Does the septic change?
Uh, so, uh, granting, if you could go through the, the five.
Sure.
Points of law, and then we may have just, uh, questions after each if you, and then we'll go from there.
Well, the, the five points are written with the both going concurrently, so I don't have a separate write-up for each one.
That's okay, we'll, we'll take care, we'll take care of that if, if it's approved.
So, number one, granting the variance will not be contrary to public interest. As the courts have said, to the, be contrary to the public interest, the variance must unduly and in marked degree conflict with the ordinance such as it violates the ordinance, ordinances, basic zoning objectives. State the purpose of section three point oh eight nine is to provide an adequate division of transition from abutting land uses and the purpose of section three point oh eight eight is tied, is, is tied to allow an increased density in cluster developments. It's tied to allowing an increased density in cluster developments. It is notable that lot two B dash two ninety-three dash one is the only lot within the existing cluster development that does not take access from Hampstead Road, which was constructed with the development. The existing property has frontage on Tinker Road and abuts residential lots to the north, east, and south. The abutting residential properties are similar in size and presentation from Tinker Road, meaning that the nature of the property's lots' use and the neighboring lots will be consistent with one another. This is not an instance where residential development is proposed to abut commercial or industrial uses. Furthermore, the natural topography and vegetation provides an effective transition and screening buffer between the existing structures and the uses on the subject parcel and its abutting lots. The residence to the south where the hundred foot buffer is applied is nearly three hundred and fifty feet away, so adequate buffering and transition will still exist in this location. In regards to the requirements of the connection to municipal sewer, this unfortunately is not allowed by the town. This is no fault of the current property owner and really creates a hardship to the development of, of the property. For these reasons, and to work with the town's, um, direction, the owner and applicant have agreed to design an onsite septic system and seek relief from the zoning board. The septic system design will meet local and state design requirements. In light of the above, the requested variances do not conflict with the purpose of the ordinance and granting the request of relief will not be contrary to the public interest.
Any questions on number one? Number two?
Number two, the spirit of the, of the ordinance is observed. This analysis is similar to the one above. Again, the express rationale behind the clustered buffer is to provide a transition between uses. Here, the subject property will be developed into a single family residence, which is consistent with the surroundings. The proposed impacts into the hundred foot buffer are primarily for the construction of an onsite septic system with minor encroachments for the driveway as the layout of the site is best situated to comply with other dimensional requirements. This layout is required to contemplate the construction of an onsite septic system, which again is required due to the fact that the town will not allow the property to tie into the municipal sewer system. This buffer area will still be mostly vegetated and no structures are proposed to exist in this area. With, when you consider that, when you consider this area will still allow for adequate transitioning and neighboring, uh, and the neighboring residence is located nearly three hundred and fifty feet to the south, given this, we believe the proposed development of the lot will blend into the essential character of the neighborhood and allow for the, the safe and reasonable use of the property. In light of the above, the spirit of the ordinance, which ultimately seeks to promote the health and safety, convenience, and welfare of the town, is observed in the requested variances.
Questions on number two? Number three?
Granting the variance would do substantial justice. Substantial justice is done when the loss of denying a variance exceeds the gain to the general public in strict enforcing, in strictly enforcing the ordinance. Here, granting the required variances will simply allow for the use of the existing property in a reasonable manner. On the other hand, denying the variances will not result in an appreciable gain to the public as this lot was approved back in nineteen ninety-eight as a buildable lot capable of handling the development as proposed. Thus, granting the variance will do substantial justice.
So, when it was approved back in nineteen ninety-eight, the zoning laws, my understanding, have changed a little since then. Um, and I guess my, my question is, um, and, and I kinda jumped the gun, I might've gone back to, uh, spirit of the variance, ordinance. The, the, the septic system itself, um... I guess planning would have to take a look at it, but, eh, I mean, what, what, and, and I've been out there and I've driven by the, the, but, the site. What's the topography for, for runoff or for overflow or, you know, septic, having the septic system goes? This, is this gonna be flowing into the neighbor's property?
No, there's.
It looked pretty flat, but I'm just kinda curious from the soil, soil density.
Very flat, this is the area.
Actually, can you grab the mic? I'm sorry, sorry, thanks.
Where we've got the septic located is really the best place for it, I mean, this is where the best soils are. Over here is fairly wet, there's, there's a drainage ditch to flow over here, there's a wetland here, uh, the culvert, there's a town drainage easement here. So this is really not a good location for the septic system. And then, you know, up here, you have the driveway and it's where the old barn was located. And then the back, again, this is, this soil is really not suitable, so this is the best place for it and that's why we're proposing to put it there.
And you said the next closest house is three hundred?
Three hundred and fifty feet away.
Okay. And they're, and they're, uh...
Well, that's not the closest house, but that's, this is the house with the, this is where the landscape buffer is.
Right.
And this is the house that abuts it there. There's obviously one across the street and then there's some houses on the outside.
I was looking for the one to the south.
Yeah.
Yeah, how far that was, okay, alright, uh, yeah, number four.
Uh, number four, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The requested variance will not diminish the character of the neighborhood. The existing lot is a buildable lot and has always been depicted as one since its creation in nineteen eighty-eight, says ninety-eight. The development of the subject property will be in harmony with the cer- with the neighborhood and will meet all the other dimensional requirements thereby providing adequate buffering to the surrounding, surroundings. Granting the variance therefore will not result in diminution of property values for neighboring properties. In contrary, our experience has been that new development will often improve the values of neighboring properties, especially when the proposed development is in harmony with the neighborhood.
The house is being built there, or the house is, on the, on the plans here, is, uh, is that in, is that, uh, is that similar to the other houses that are in the area?
Okay.
I mean, as far as.
Size and nature.
Size, design, I mean.
It's a nice looking house.
Okay, but I'm, I'm just, you know.
It might be a little bigger than the other ones, I'm not sure.
Bunch of two bedroom homes, you're putting a four bedroom there, so, yeah.
Uh, most of those, uh, houses on that road, if I'm not mistaken, are four bedroom, the majority are four bedroom homes.
Okay.
And I believe that's what he's looking to build.
Okay. Uh, number five, unnecessary hardship?
Unnecessary hardship, owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because the subject property is special and distinct from the other properties in the area as this property is part of Tinker Woods Cluster Development, is the only lot in the development that takes access directly from Tinker Road, is the largest buildable lot in the development, and is the only lot in the development the town will not connect to municipal sewer due to capacity issues. When you consider these special conditions along with how the property is in harmony with the surrounding areas and properties along Tinker Road, we believe that no fair or substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. And the proposed use is reasonable because the variances being requested with this application are required due to the town's denial of this project connecting to the municipal sewer system. As a re- result of this denial, we have designed a layout for the home, driveway, and onsite septic system and are requesting the proper relief for this layout to be constructed on the subject property. With this in mind, we certainly believe that the proposed use is reasonable.
Okay, any questions on, or, yes?
All right, you keep saying that the town is denying you, the town isn't denying you, that's, just that they cannot hook up because they, they are too full at this point.
They don't have the capacity, correct?
Right, it's not that it's a denial, they just can't do it. You're, you're using the wrong terminology.
The property, the lot was approved with the anticipation to hook, connect to municipal sewer and now we're being denied that connection.
You're not being denied.
Yeah, we are, I actually visited myself. Um, I went down and I spoke to.
Mike, move the mic over.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I went down and I spoke to town sewer myself on two occasions. And the problem is, is that sector of town has too much flow coming in. I, I believe PSNH, uh, is it, not PSNH, Pennecheck Water Works?
Mm-hmm.
Has a piece of that, and they have voiced that they are at capacity, they can't take anymore. And if you look down the street about a sixteenth of a mile, those two homes that were recently built, just before you get to Continental Boulevard.
Mm-hmm.
Those two homes had to get septic. So I'm in the same boat that they were, what, a year ago, a year and a half ago?
Okay.
When they built those homes, so. I would love to hook up the sewer, if you can. So I would love to hook up the sewer, if you can get me in, I'd be obliged.
Well, we were forced to hook into sewer now.
So I would love to, okay, but unfortunately, I'm being forced, just like those two homes a year and a half ago that were built just down the street from me, I am in the same boat that they are.
Understandable.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm not going to get into a word contest, but there is a difference between we can't do it and you're denied, if you understand what I'm saying.
Right, we were denied. I've asked the town, and I've asked Penachech Water Works, and they both said that I can't on two different occasions.
Right, because they're...
At capacity, for that flow in that area.
But I'm sure if there was a way that they could do it, they probably, they'd do it.
I would love it. I would love it, that'd be awesome.
I think anybody would much rather be on town sewer than on septic system.
Any other questions? Number five. We'll open this up to our public gentleman, so is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? If you want to speak against the petition, come on down. I need you to sign in and state your name. You'll have a chance to review what she's... Get signed in and state your name. Were you sworn in earlier?
Yes. Hi, my name is Kathy Byrne. I live on nineteen Hampstead Road. My husband, Carlos Byrne. We're new to this, so it's the first time sitting before you.
That's okay.
So we came today not knowing the proposal that well, what was happening, but understanding that it was going to be something built in the buffer.
Uh-huh.
Being a homeowner there since two thousand and four, we have a, the conservation buffer that goes through our backyard.
Uh-huh.
We're in the understanding that we can never build back there. No pool, no house, no shed, no anything, because it's a conservation buffer. If I may read a letter to you.
Buy it, please.
From Robert Price, Planning, Zone, and Administrator. He states that a cluster development shall have at least a hundred-foot landscape buffer to provide an adequate division of transition from abutting land uses. This area is different than the open space portion of the development. However, language is clear in that, in this area, which cannot be disturbed. As we discussed, even though the ordinance does not specifically spell out how the buffer can, can or is to be maintained, it is previously interpreted and understood by this office that removal of dead trees, which pose a clear danger to one's personal property, cannot be removed. Live vegetation, however, cannot be removed in this area. So that buffer is a buffer, from our understanding, is homeowners to protect that area.
Now, where is your house in relation on the map? Are you...
At the cul-de-sac.
You're, oh, you're down in the cul-de-sac? Oh, okay. All right. And you can't build around your house because there's conservation land, is what you're saying?
Behind my house, because there's conservation land.
Okay.
The conservation land runs across the entire back of all those houses that are across the street from where the proposal is.
Comes right down, right down here, all the way over, over, and right down here. And that's the conservation land that he's talking about, putting some of the driveway and the septic system on the conservation.
Because my understanding, based on the cluster development, is that that's actually a buildable property. So I'm a little confused, and I'm looking at the same map you're looking at.
Okay.
So I, I'm just kind of, it's a, it's a buildable property, and it was, and that's not, and that was something that was established back in eighty-eight.
It's buildable right off the buffer, just like our house was?
Uh-huh.
On lot eleven. But nothing is back in that buffer. We can't put a shed, we can't put a pool, we can't put...
You're talking about two different things here.
Okay.
There's the conservation land, which you abut.
Yeah.
That's not your property.
No.
That's conservation land.
Yep.
What they're talking about is on their property...
The buffer.
There's a buffer on their property that they're talking about, not the conservation land.
Right.
So two different things.
But the, that same buffer is our buffer, too, that's behind our house.
No. Behind your house is conservation land.
No, I disagree. I'm sorry.
Okay.
This map right here shows the whole, I didn't know I had to submit something, so I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's okay.
So this map, Tinker Woods...
Yep.
Shows the, and maybe I'm using the wrong terminology, but it's, I thought it was conservation buffer, but the buffer, the hundred-foot buffer, that goes literally up Hampstead Road. So if you start at number three, Hampstead, go four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, it goes way in the back of that fifteen, nine-point-seven acres, lot number fifteen. The buffer goes all the way back, over by Le Blank, over by Continental, all the way up, all the way down, and then back down Hampstead.
And that's, that's common land.
That's buffer, right? That's a hundred-foot buffer, just like they talked about, is a hundred-foot buffer.
Right. I think what you, Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what you're, you're kind of mixing up is conservation land and what's considered a buffer. A buffer, a buffer can be an open field that's not conservation land. Conservation land is, help me if I don't want to, yeah, is protected, where not all buffers, not buffers aren't necessarily protected land.
Right.
Now, come, you know, don't get me wrong, you can have conservation land that is a buffer. In this case, I don't think that's...
Kelly.
Yeah, go ahead.
The hundred-foot buffer...
Yep.
Is because of the cluster zoning.
Yep.
That one hundred feet of property is on this gentleman's land. It is his private property.
Same with my house.
It's not town's, it's not conservation, it belongs to the property owner.
Same with my house. So if you look at this Tinker Woods, you can see behind my house, behind ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, there's all that hundred-foot buffer.
Kelly?
If I'm, if I can make an attempt. So there's a large piece of common land that I believe your property abut. In addition to your property abutting that common land that you just referenced that goes around all of Hampstead Road, basically?
Mm-hmm.
There's a buffer that overlaps the land and heads into your property.
Yep.
They're two separate things. So you abut that common land...
Yep.
You also have that hundred-foot landscape buffer.
Right.
They're two separate things.
It's the same thing.
Most every property on Hampstead Road, including this fifteen tinker, has that hundred-foot buffer that extends somewhat into the property.
Right.
They're two different things. You're right in saying that you can't do anything on that common land area.
Unless you come to us for a variance.
Unless you come here, just as you can't do anything within that landscape buffer without coming here, that's why they're coming here.
So...
For the variance.
So if I may say, so if you wanted to put in a shed or a pool, you'd have to come and seek a variance.
Right.
Which people do, because they, they have similar situations, because they have...
Even to encroach on it...
Encroach on the buffer.
Onto the buffer.
Right. But that's not, so that buffer is not the same thing as conservation land, which is protected land.
So I might have used the wrong term by saying...
Right, that's why I was trying to clarify.
Conservation buffer, so the buffer...
Conservation land.
The, the, you, drop the conservation, buffer.
So the buffer, that's they're proposing to put part of the driveway on in the septic system, is the same buffer that's on my property.
Correct.
Yes. Which they're asking for a variance...
Correct.
To do that.
Yes.
And if you wanted to put a pool, or expand your driveway, or put a shed, you would also have to get a variance, if you're going to be on that buffer, encroach on that buffer.
So I guess our argument is that we always, right, you'd have to, because you shouldn't build on that buffer...
Right.
Unless you get the variance, and that's what they're here for today.
Yes.
So just, we're saying that are all our properties on buildable land, not the buffer, and I think the same thing should hold true to there, not encroaching on that buffer, because...
One of the reasons for coming for a variance is because there's something unique on that particular lot that prevents it from being done without the variance.
Right.
And it's, that's, that's what they're talking about, is there's something unique...
Right.
Which you may not have anything unique on your property, but they feel, whether they do or not, it has not been determined, but they feel that there is something unique that prevents them from using that lot without a variance. So that's what the difference is.
So may I see the other diagram?
Which one?
Which shows the septic system.
Do you have a mic?
So the septic system will be put on the buffer, and that's...
You're talking to the mic, that's what I think.
The septic system is being put on the buffer and part of the driveway.
Can you...
The pink is the buffer?
Can you highlight where the buffer is, please?
Above the orange line.
Okay.
And the septic system?
And that's a hundred feet from where? So that's the lot line. So the buffer is really halfway into that lot?
So because of where the buffer sits, based on their property line, that's why they're seeking a variance, because it's a special exception, or that's why they're seeking a variance, because it is a unique, because it's a unique situation where the buffer for the, for the, for the cluster development happens to literally almost go right through the property itself. So in order to put a house, the driveway, or the septic system, and they have to seek relief from the variance in order to be able to build, build that.
And you're saying that the other side of the house is where you described wetlands?
Right.
So that you can't do something in there? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Behind the house, too?
Behind the house, too.
It looks a little bit behind the house, it is, yes. Yes. But as long as the, but you can have, as long as the septic meets the requirements of being not near the wetlands, and I don't know the exact distance, but as long as they are not near the wetlands, they can put that septic system in there, provided they get the variance to put it in what's quote-unquote "the buffer."
So if I can just clarify...
Yes.
The, based on how you describe the reasons for why somebody would seek a variance, if the, if the board decides to approve the variance, it doesn't in any way set a precedent for other properties, each and every...
No.
Correct.
Cases looked at by itself. And the only reason I mention it is because the first one that we heard, there was a lot of cases stated and talk about precedent, and I think that's probably a concern of ours and, and, you know, perhaps some of our neighbors, is that for the most part, everybody has kept true to not doing anything with that buffer land.
So, I understand exactly what you're saying about precedent. No, it does not set a precedent. We do look at each variance separately. And like Fran had pointed out, we don't look at the what-ifs down the road, we look at what's presented at the moment. If next month, you decided you wanted to put a pool in, and it was going to be within the buffer, you have every right to approach the zoning board to seek relief, to put that in, and then state your case as well, and then whether or not, and then, then, based on questions and obviously conversation with the board, it could be approved or denied. But you, you actually, and so that's what I was kind of interested in, you were reading that letter from Rob. You're right, in a conservation land, you can't do that. But in that type of a buffer, if you wanted to do some expansion, you, and you'd have to seek relief before you could do that, yes. And then you'd have to come forward, make the five points. But no, it wouldn't be setting a precedent.
Conceivably, we could deny this motion for the variance. And two months later, you could come to us and say, I need a variance because in order to put this, whatever it is, on my property, it's unique, and there's no other way of doing it, and so I need to encroach on that buffer by three feet, ten feet, whatever. We could conceivably grant it, even though we denied his, because everyone is treated on its own merits, and the property has to be unique.
Or vice versa. It could get approved, and yours could get denied.
Right, right.
So it's, it's, like you said, case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm just...
That's okay.
Just give me one second. Sorry. So, and I understand the septic system, it's probably hard to put in the wetlands, because that's a very, very, I mean, if you go there in the springtime...
You can't.
It's wet.
Right.
Wet, 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 wet.
Yep.
And I can see that where the town's not allowing them to, or...
Can't.
Can't do it right now.
Yep.
And that's fine, but having the driveway now encroaching a little bit more, I mean, how far are they going to push it? Do you know what I'm saying? So can't they just restructure that driveway to push it a little bit more?
Well, so, so next step after this...
Yep.
Is planning, is it? Oh, there's, okay. All right. Go ahead, Kelly.
So that's in the, that's in the buffer.
Right.
And I can see the point, and I, I appreciate the fact that they're building a nice house, a single-family house, you know, yeah, you know, we have a nice neighborhood. However, you know, I think they're just, it's just a little bit much to even go on.
Okay.
They can't adjust the driveway.
Kelly?
They're not tied to that driveway being where it is right now in that plan.
Okay.
If they do that and build it that way, and it's encroaching, and we find that it's encroaching, they'll have to come back and get a variance for the driveway.
So the initial plan, so the, so the initial, that is kind of maybe more of a...
Conceptual.
Conceptual idea of what we'll look at? Thank you. More of conceptual. And yes, you know, there is enforcement to make sure that they stay within what they propose, or what the final proposal is. So if, yes, there is, driveway is in that buffer, as Kelly would say, they would have to come back here. And, and, and if that's found, if that's denied, that's going to be a significant cost to them to have to relocate that driveway. And they're aware of that, so they don't want to do that. But, yes...
We all want to be good neighbors.
Yes.
We have a concern, because that's, that's what we believe for the past fourteen years, is that we couldn't build on that, so that, that was just our concern.
Yeah, no, and, and I fully unders, understand what you're saying, and, but there, but yeah, and, and, and hopefully, understanding that the conservation and the buffer there are two different...
Sorry.
Conservation land and a buffer.
Thank you.
Two different things.
The variance they're asking for is only for the septic.
Okay, but they're scheduled...
Doesn't matter.
Okay. So technically, they, just to clarify, they can't build...
If they want to put the driveway in the, in the buffer, they got to come back here and ask us.
I'm just looking at the diagram, it's the first time I see the diagram, and it was confusing to me.
Sure.
The variance specifically says, allow us to put the septic.
So knowing that the, with the septic system, and I don't know about septic systems, because we have town sewer and water, I do apologize.
That's, that's okay.
The water table, is there something to do with the septic system, that water table and disrupting the conservation land that's next to it, the buffer, or anything like that, having that septic system there, does that, because it's wetlands, and then...
They have, they have to have a state-approved septic design...
Okay.
That looks at those kinds of things.
And depending on the soil and absorption and things to that, and grade, there are different septic systems that are required based upon what is the soil and, and, and the, in the grade, and the property, and the size of the home, and they have to abide by those when, when putting them in. Those are, those are state laws that they have to abide by for building purposes.
It's not going to explode, or...
Well, I mean, I don't know, in a way, I can't say, it shouldn't.
Right, right, right.
But no, it, it, there are very strict, the state in Hampshire has some pretty strict requirements when it comes to septic, especially anything that's going to be near the wetlands.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So anybody else that would like to speak against this petition? Evening. If you could sign your, sign in and then state your name and pull the microphone close to you.
Good evening. My name is Don Weiss Espire from 10 Dunbarton Drive.
Okay.
Basically, uh, my biggest issue right now is the fact that we're only given a couple of days' notice of this hearing and of this proposal. So I really didn't have time to look into it.
Okay.
Um, I did quickly look at the, the sewer charts and I noted that the sewer line does run right adjacent to the property. I did a quick look at the sewer district master plan, which talked about a proposal to increase the capacity of the Penachuck Pumping Station, which is what this line feeds into because of proposed additional development in the area. And, and that proposal is on the table to increase the capacity of that pumping station, mostly because this feeder pipe goes south and there's a lot of undeveloped property down there that is likely to be developed. And especially some that could be commercial, which are obviously having higher sewage requirements. So, you know, I was not aware and have not seen anything to, to verify that they cannot actually connect to the sewer line. That is something I would like to see. Like I said, I would like to have had enough notice of this uh, so that we could have actually researched it and, you know, addressed these questions.
Okay.
Also, talking about the, the houses that were further down the road, also are long distance from the sewer line. I can't imagine that they were going to hook up that sewer line. The cost would have been prohibitive. They would have had to cut all the way through Tinker Road to come down there. The sewer line does not go anywhere near those two new houses that were referred to. Uh, also, I was just respectfully, respectfully.
Yes.
Uh, like to disagree with the statements about precedent. Precedent may not matter to this board. But precedent will certainly matter to a court if this variance is allowed. And then in the future, for example, the farm next door that could be subdivided into many lots right adjacent to this, uh, this buffer area, and they all wanted to put septic systems in. If this board denied those variances, person, the property owner there could very easily go into court and claim precedent because this was allowed. Like I said, my biggest concern is just that we were not given enough time to gather facts. And I'm not saying I necessarily am opposed to this. I would just like to have been able to actually research it uh, and understand whether or not, you know, this is a truthful presentation before this board votes.
All legitimate, legitimate concerns. As far as the notification, I'm not sure, I, I, I'm not sure why you weren't notified, notified sooner.
We got letters over the weekend.
Over the weekend, okay. All right. That being said, um, as far as you said, future, the, uh, the, I think you alluded to the pump station being upgraded or enhanced to be able to take that on. I think you had mentioned that, that when you started.
There was, there's proposals to increase that because of anticipated larger developments south of this, uh, the cluster.
And that, and that very well could be the case. I, I don't know anything about that.
I, uh, excuse me, I don't either.
Right.
That's my point.
What, what I'm saying, well, let me finish. Okay?
Part of it.
Let me finish. So, again, and it was brought up, based on the hearing now, we're, we're, we're making the judgment based on the hearing now, not what is proposed that. And, and if tomorrow Penachuck comes out and says, yep, we'll be able to do sewer there, believe me, these gentlemen won't even be putting a septic system in there. They'll go, they, they'll hook up to the sewer. They'd hook up to the sewer tonight if they could, but they can't because Penachuck said that they don't have the capacity at the moment to do that. So if they, if the proposal changes three months from now and they haven't built the house and put the septic system in, trust me, they'll go, they'll jump right on that bandwagon. That would be their preference. So I do understand what you're saying. So I, I do understand what you're saying regarding the septic and, and, and what may be proposed, but we're looking at what's based upon the now. As far as the sub-development, again, that's something, yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. The, the people next to you could turn around and subdivide that land. But if they're going to, and again, now we're talking about, we're talking about future, which we can't really judge, but it will go down that road for a moment. If they do that and they put in, say, a cluster development, they can't do septic. They have to do sewer. That is why the folks that were before you are on, they're, they're on town sewer because it was made as a cluster development. And that's, that's not a Meramec law. That is.
That's our ordinance.
Yeah, that's a, that's a Meramec ordinance. So someone, so you're right, could your neighbor subdivide and build a cluster development? Yeah, they could if they can get public sewer. If they can't get public sewer, then they can't build a cluster development. Could they split it up and build houses and put septics in there? Sure, they could. They, and, and if, and if they, if they meet the, you know, they come in and meet, and meet all the criteria and the variance, they could very well do that. That could happen in any property, you know, in, 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 in Meramec. So I, I understand what you're saying regarding that, but as far as, as far as the septic, you know, if, if given a choice, yeah, they wouldn't be even here tonight talking about that if they didn't have to. So I don't know if that answers some of your questions or, or kind of gives you a little more information based on that. As far as setting a precedent, yeah, I mean, sure, you know, lawyer, a lawyer can make anything a precedent, right? But.
In, in a court, they have to look precedent. This board does not have to look precedent, but a court does.
Yeah. And, and I, and, and it's a valid point. And we have, and believe me, in the years that I've been on ZBI, I've seen people make mention of previous approvals of variances. But as Lynette stated earlier, you know, we take them on a case by case basis. Just because we approved one variance three years ago to do something, doesn't mean that we're going to approve a variance tomorrow or today to do something that's similar. Because it's taken on a case by case basis, based upon the criteria, based upon uniqueness of property, which Meramec has a lot of. They have very a lot of unique lots, um, which I'm sure you've seen and heard tonight, you know, in speaking with a couple of different folks. So, I, you know, I, but I, I do understand what you're saying. And, and as far as the notification, I'm sorry that you weren't notified sooner on that. Um, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't handle the notifications, but I, I do apologize that you didn't have more time to prepare.
Uh, yes. Hon- honestly, um, if we had been notified with sufficient notice to actually have looked into this and we had been given, uh, the, the information on it, it is very possible I wouldn't even be here tonight because it, it might be a very accepted plan. I, I don't object to someone building on the lot. I object to them intruding into the buffer zone without the, us being given the notice and the factual data in which to look at it and say, uh, this, this is a bad thing or this is an okay thing.
Okay.
And, and, and that's the, the, the reason I'm here. Like I said, given sufficient data and notification, I might not be here. And my neighbors might not be here. We weren't given that.
And again, for that, I apologize.
The rebuttal notifications were sent out in accordance with state law and they were posted in two different newspapers per the RSA.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else that would like to speak against this petition? Uh, gentlemen, would you like to come back and review any of the comments made, please?
We'd just like to point out that we did include the driveway in the variance.
Okay.
So the way the, the house is situated, you know, we're right on this back lot line. We could probably, and we're right on the front lot line, so there's not really a whole lot of room to, to reorient, reorientate the house. And you need this backup space to get in and out of the garage. I mean, if we cut it along that line, you wouldn't be able to get into that, that bay. Uh, this, this piece here, we could probably shift over, push come to shove, but you know, this, this little triangle here really need that to be in the buffer.
So, Kelly, is that driveway, is that part of the whole permitting of a single family? Does the driveway fall under that?
Yeah, that, that's the way it's stated in the petition.
So our documents were just neglected to include the driveway in it. Okay, fine.
Any other comments, gentlemen?
No, I just want to say, I, I don't want to take up too much more time. I just want to say that, you know, I, 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 you know, anybody that knows me knows that I'm very emotional and I just want to point out to the board and the people behind me that I have spent a lot of time, years, uh, rather than rip down that barn that has a long history with this town and throw it in a dumpster like anybody else would have done. I spent two and a half years trying to find a home for that dumps, uh, uh, for that barn. And I, and I did. And I just want everybody in, in this neighborhood behind me to know that it's sitting in New Ipswich on a, on a beautiful farm and this developer did not throw it in a dumpster. I would like that to be known. That's all, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Chris, now I, I fully recognize that and appreciate that. And I know you've been before us before with, uh, when synergy was put in.
Yes.
Um, and I, you remember, I was on those decisions back then. I know you're passionate.
I'm emotional.
I know you're passionate. You're passionate about what you do.
Love pressure.
I recognize that and I do appreciate.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sure that they appreciate that as well.
Chris, just want to say thank you very much. Uh, I've seen that barn and I'm so glad that you did that.
It's a New Ipswich, it's a New Ipswich.
And it doesn't encroach on the buffer up there, does it?
No.
All right. Um, is there, and did you, I have something else you want to add? Okay. Um, gentlemen, if you could, uh, let's see. Come on up. I need you to come right up this way.
I didn't see him when he pointed out the driveway.
Okay.
So the, the change in the driveway?
Okay.
Because that wasn't on the.
Right.
Letter.
Yeah, no.
It wasn't on ours either.
It wasn't on ours, so that's why we asked.
And this is the first time I've seen that. I thought it was just a septic. So if he could point out the driveway.
So the driveway, if you see the orange line there.
What was he, what was he proposing?
The gray area, there's like, there's like a little bit of a bump out. So basically you can pull out of the garage and turn around without driving on the grass. Right there.
So they can't reposition the house?
No, we, uh, explain, this is the rear setback. This is the wetland setback. This is the front setback. Here's your corner of the house here, so.
The, the dotted yellow line is the what? Land setback?
Yes, highlighted yellow is the building setback. And then this is your landscape buffer.
Cause it's 20 feet in the back, 20 feet in the front?
Sixty feet from the back.
You're saying wetland setback and setback. I'm sorry. I'm, I just don't know.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay.
There's a 40-foot wetland setback and then the side one's not labeled, but then this one's labeled 60 feet. Then we have the, so they, basically this yellow line is your building box and then you have the wetland here, the, the ditch, so.
They can't position it because of the wetlands?
Right. It's pretty much squeezing, it's pretty locked in because of all the restrictions.
What's that blue line?
That's the drainage ditch.
Drainage ditch. That goes right along Hampstead.
Yeah. Well, Hampstead's over here, yeah.
It's on their property.
This is open space.
Right, that's the road.
Now, the roads, we just touch it in one spot. The road's here.
Okay.
And there's a, there's an open space parcel in the front of the development.
Yep, yep. I see, I see.
That corner, right beside the pink.
Actually.
He's standing there.
That's okay.
That's why I clicked.
Sorry.
Sorry.
So the, the corner spot right there?
This is the only thing we touched the road here. This is an open space lot. There's a swale that comes through here. This is your buffer. Which lot were you back here? You don't know?
Nineteen.
These are, oh, so it's this one here?
Yep.
Yeah, so you have.
My whole backyard is buffer.
Yep.
Right up to the corner of my deck. Yay. Yay me.
If you look at the aerial, these are.
It's a nice neighborhood.
And here's your buffer line here. So there's already a lot of encroachment going on.
Not on my plot.
The aerial says.
Not on my.
All right.
But so, the way that, that I didn't understand the wetlands, because I didn't know there was wetland buffer there. Cause it doesn't show it on that town map.
Right.
Right.
So that, that was confusing to me.
There's a couple of setbacks that are involved. You've got setbacks from the property line.
Right.
As well as setbacks from landscape buffer or from wetlands. There, there's a number of different setbacks that, and they've kind of positioned that house.
And they've positioned it the best way that they.
That they could. And, and the, and the problem is, is a little bit of that driveway.
Can you go back to that map one more time? I'm sorry. And it, go ahead.
A little bit of that driveway, a corner of it.
Yep.
Is going to impact the landscape buffer.
And they still follow the same Tinker Woods setbacks, the 11 feet, 20 feet, everything.
Everything else, they have positioned it appropriately.
They've maximized the amount of space that they can actually use within their setbacks and, and but given the buffer.
That's a nice big driveway.
Yeah, it is.
That's bigger than my driveway. Block of garage.
Three.
Three, yeah. So, um, but yeah.
That's.
Thank you, thank you for explaining that.
Sure.
Any other, anybody else like to speak against this petition? Come on up.
I come completely unprepared. My name's Stephanie England.
If you could sign in, please, and state your name, that'd be great. Were you sworn in?
I don't believe so.
Raise your right hand. Just rather tell the truth, the whole truth, and not put a truce off, you got?
I do. I'm actually the owner of 15 Tinker Road right across the street.
Okay.
And, um, I just came back from Europe last night, so I'm completely unprepared and I apologize for that.
That's okay.
I have kind of followed a little bit that story across the street. I bought 15 Tinker because it was a very old historic building in, in Meramec and I absolutely believe in preserving those. I tried to build the, uh, buy the barn across the street. I didn't have the money for it. I do know in fact that when Chris bought the barn, he made promises to the owner that he was going to preserve that barn and keep it the way it is because it was the fifth oldest building in Meramec. And it's a crime that this was allowed to happen. He could have gladly put it on the opposite lot. So I'm sure if there would have been a little bit more outreach, Chris, we talked on the phone.
Actually, can you direct, you direct the test, please? Thank you.
I talked to him on the phone. He could have put it on the property behind just to keep it from Meramec. Okay? So that's just one thing I want to say. There's a lot of not truth things and I don't have proof or anything. I just came basically, rolled out of bed to be here today to just say, please read what's going on. This was, property was sold so cheap because he knew he couldn't build on it. The owner knew you couldn't build on it. And that's why she basically gave him that property, I believe for $50,000, okay? So it is a money issue, okay? The barn should have been preserved. The only historic, historic part of this Tinker Road is my house now and the one down the street. And I don't mind new buildings, but at least be honest about it. When you read the proposal of selling the opposite side, there's disagreement of what's in there. It's not the truth. And that's all I want to mention is, let's keep it truth, you know? If it's variance or I don't understand any of it, but this was history that you guys just, that, that the town allowed to destroy. And it was not honest. And that's all I have to say about this.
All right, thank you. All right, it's not, let's say, we, all comments are directed, Chris?
Sorry.
Please don't make me have to ask you to leave. Gentlemen, I'd like to come up if you have any other fur- further comments. If there's anyone else that wants to speak against this petition? All right, I'm going to, unless you guys have any final comments, I'm going to close this public, I'm going to close the public and open it up to the board discussion. Any final comments?
No, sir.
I fully understand where you're coming from?
Thank you.
All right. All right, I'm closing the public hearing. Lenny? Comments, questions?
Comments? They have a lot of record. It's being held hostage by a requirement of the cluster zone that it was approved in to have sewer. But the town can't provide the sewer. So the owner is being penalized and not being able to use his lot unless he can get relief. Pretty simple, straightforward.
Lynn?
I'm going to address allowing the septic first, not the buffer. I think Lenny's absolutely right. You have a definite hardship in that you cannot put septic, or you cannot put sewer on this property at the moment. What happens in the future, we don't know. But at the moment, you can't do it. And so therefore I'm leaning towards allowing the septic or allowing septic to be used on this lot instead of, uh.
Minister, sorry. Fran?
I, I can't say anymore. Lenny said it all.
Okay. Kathy? If there's no further discussion, can I have a motion on 2018 dash 35 case number?
I'll make a motion. That we grant the variance under section 3.08.8 of the zoning ordinance permit the construction of a single-family residence on an existing lot of record that is part of a cluster development without access to municipal sewer. The parcel is located at 15 Tinker Road in the R4 Residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map 2B, lot 293 hyphen 01, case number 2018 hyphen 35.
Second.
Second by Fran? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five zero zero. The next petition, Yin Yang Yang Zhang and Christopher Ross. Variance under section 3.08.9 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a private, a private septic system with a cluster development, 100 feet landscape buffer. The parcel is located at 15 Tinker Road in the R4 Residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map 2B, lot 293 dash 01, case number 2018 dash 36. I would like to make a motion that the five points have been read in. Kelly? So I've just, I'd like to say that, can we just skip over having to read those back in?
Are they different?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So we're just going to go with the five points have been read in. We haven't. Okay, so we're just gonna go with the five points have been read in, we haven't, there was no question or debate on those five points from the previous, they are the same for this one.
Okay.
Do you, did either gentleman have a comment on this petition? It's time, okay. I will open this up to the public, is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there?
Same thing.
Anybody that would like to speak against this petition? This petition is, the variance to permit the construction of the single-family residence on a lot of record, where the other one was to permit the construction of a septic system within a cluster development's hundred foot. This is thirty-six, that's what, I'm just, this is thirty-six, I'm sorry, this is the septic system, the first one was the, was the, was the permit of the lot. Sorry.
Thirty-five was...
No, I got that, I got that.
And thirty-six is the buffer.
Right. Thirty-six is the construction of the private septic system, which we, we discussed along both, and so I will put it up to the public to speak for or against. If there's nobody who's speaking for it or against, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I either look for a discussion or a motion on this. The reason be, being is that, basically, the, the five criteria, there was no, there are the same for both, and there was no comments or questions by the board on that five criteria. So unless there's questions, concerns on this, I'll look for a motion.
Unless there's no questions or concerns, I'll make a motion on it. I'm gonna address Mr. Zhang, the petitioner, and Christopher Ross is the owner. We grant the variance under section three point zero eight point nine of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a private septic system within a cluster development's one hundred foot landscaped buffer. The parcel is located at fifteen Tinker Road in the R four residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map two B, lot two ninety-three dash one, case number two thousand eighteen dash thirty-six.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Kathy. All in favor of approving variance, section three point zero eight point nine of the zoning ordinance for the construction of the private septic system, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Five zero zero. You gentlemen, or it's been approved, you have thirty days for somebody to appeal.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Last but not least, Mark Rivet, petitioner, and FPP, FPL LLC. Okay, sorry, hold on a second. Mark, we're gonna take two seconds, sorry, I apologize.
Doesn't bother me to sit on Mark's case, I just wanna run downstairs.
Alright.
Yes.
Before we can vote if that's...
Five minutes. The only thing you missed was the cream and the pledge.
You know what, I'll never do it again, cause I am off my game tonight. This is a five-minute recess. Alright, okay, so, we're back, let me, let me read these in. Let me read in the first one, we're gonna take them one at a time, and Mark, I appreciate your patience. So first petition is Mark Rivet, petitioner, and FPL LLC owner, special exception under section two point zero two point one three E three of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot in the Town Center Overlay District to have less than the required hundred twenty-five feet of frontage following a lot line adjustment. The parcel is located at an unnumbered lot on Railroad Avenue in the I one industrial and Aquifer Conservation, flood hazard conservation, and Town Center Overlay Districts, tax map five D dash four, lot zero seven eight, case number two thousand eighteen dash thirty-seven.
Hi. Hello again. So, just give an overview here.
So, here's the thing, we've got three petitions.
They're all pretty much the same.
And they're all, pretty much, it's a domino effect, cause you don't get one, we're gonna go on to the next. Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
We're gonna hear them all separately, and we're gonna, we're gonna vote on them all separately, but I was hoping that you could give a, kind of a quick five-minute overview that summarizes all three of them, so that we don't have to, to get that part out.
First, these are all like housekeeping type things, so what we're proposing to do is, Mark owns this lot, this lot, and this big blue lot, and then the butter owns this one, correct? So...
That, that's the new building.
No. No, the, the teal.
Actually, have you speak into the mic, just cause, yeah, sorry.
This is the flower shop.
Right.
This is the Nationwide.
Yep.
Uh, building, this is the funeral home.
Yep.
Okay, so I own the funeral home in the Nationwide building.
Okay.
This is Dan Hawk.
Yep.
And then this is the new buildings that you're talking about.
The house.
She's not affected in any way.
Okay.
But I bought the FPL LLC as the floodplain land.
Okay.
That's what FPL stands for, so that's, I purchased that.
Okay.
So, the large lot is the floodplain, it's, it all drops off and this is all wet down, I assume, right?
Forty feet.
It's all backwater.
Yep.
So this is the one you just read, got this little, so what he would like to do is take some of this big land and add it to these three different lots, and so that's the lot line adjustment. So anytime, apparently, that you touch an existing, uh, existing non-conforming lot,
You gotta make it conforming.
You have to make it conforming, so that's what we're here for, so this big, the big blue one, you know, a, a little piece is coming off each one of these, but the, the big blue one doesn't have enough frontage, so that's the first one, so we need to get that one frontage, and then this one, uh, I don't think this one needs anything, right? Cause it's already got a variance for the front.
I have a hundred and fifty feet there, so...
Right, so it beats the front edge, and it's got, you already got a variance for the front of this one, and it's got the lot area. These ones, these two here, they're both undersized in lot area, and they're both, don't have a frontage, and this one, this one doesn't have a front, doesn't meet the front setback, and this one doesn't meet the front or the side.
Okay, so, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about these one at a time, uh, so let's start with the first one regarding the, uh, less than required twenty feet, twenty, a hundred twenty-five feet of frontage. And then, just as always, we'll go through and questions on, this is a special exception, so A, B, C, D, E, F, just stop after each one, if there's any questions.
So the first one is the, the larger parcel, lot five D four seventy-eight, and, um, lot line adjustment, so getting to the five criteria for the special exception. The proposed additions, alterations, and improvements would serve to promote the reuse, restoration, rehabilitation, or otherwise enhance the historic building or structure, or any other potential historic building or structure identified in the historic resources inventory component of the Town Center Plan because the proposed alterations to the site consists of slightly reducing the area of the subject property in order to remedy existing encroachments onto the property from adjacent properties. This proposal would therefore make the properties more conforming as it pertains to the Town Center dimensional standards, that being the, the other parts that are getting land. The subject property does meet the frontage requirements, but not development, but no development is being proposed, oh, does not, I'm sorry, does not meet the frontage requirements, but no development is being proposed on the subject lot. Then B is the proposed additions.
So any questions on A? Okay, B?
B, the proposed additions, alterations, or, or improvements are for use currently permitted within the Town Center Overlay District because the proposed lot line adjustment proposes to simply make the subject lots more conforming. This proposal does not propose to change the uses that exist on the subject property.
Questions? C?
The proposed additions, alterations, and improvements would not result in significant increased hazards to vehicles or pedestrians, or impair or impede emergency vehicles' access, or the provisions of emergency services, or planned improvements to the transportation corridor because the proposed lot line adjustment would reduce the size of the subject property, but would not change the uses that currently exist on site, the proposal would therefore result in no increased hazards to vehicles or pedestrians, and would not impair or impede emergency access.
Questions? E?
D?
No, we adjusted D, didn't we?
No, D.
No, D, you have D.
The proposed, the proposed additions, alterations, and improvements would not result in unreasonable impacts to abutting properties by way of increased noise, odor, visual blight, or other nuisance because the proposed modification of the subject parcel will make adjacent lots more conforming and will remedy existing encroachments. There are no additions, alterations, or improvements proposed on the subject property, so there will be no impacts to the abutting properties by way of noise, odor, or visual blight.
Questions on D?
E, the proposed additions, alterations, or improvements would serve to enhance the overall goals of the Town Center Plan because this proposal will make the existing lots within the Town Center Overlay District more conforming, the proposed lot line adjustment will make the subject's lot smaller, but the parcel will still meet the minimum lot size requirements. There are no proposed additions, alterations, or improvements proposed to the structures or uses on the subject property.
And F?
F, adequate provisions for parking and other necessary support facilities are provided for the proposed additions, alteration, and improvements because the proposed lot line adjustment will make the subject property smaller, and adjacent properties larger and more conforming. There are no proposed modifications to the structures or uses on site, the subject property is currently vacant.
So, you bought that big property, and it sounds like a good chunk of it's just not buildable. Cause...
But, but to remedy encroachments. Funeral home from years ago.
Remember?
I purchased that property.
Okay.
And the, the...
Can you bring the mic a little closer, I'm sorry?
The, um, the Nationwide building, Fraser Square, as it's listed there, um, the back of that house that's there, it, they built it on the old property line. With, I mean, actually, it encroaches six inches, the building, and then the bulkhead is on the floodplain land. So it's, it's, you know, and the flower shop's the same way, same way.
This is fixing a bunch of problems.
It, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It is, yeah, I mean, pretty much the residential places down the street don't seem to be too much of an issue, but these three up front is an issue. That we're trying to just clean up and move lot lines to remedy, and obviously, relieve the back setback issues
Right.
that the properties have.
Right, no, and, and I just was curious if you were looking to build...
No, it's forty feet down, it's, it's floodplain, it's, I think, calculated on the Sohegan River flood calculations, I mean, it's, it's, it's non-buildable. Well, that, most of the people use the, the quote island that's down there as beach, they really don't, there's a few people that park on our property and go over, but it's not the beachy thing that you get from the Watson Park side.
Alright, and I don't think you need to put anything else regarding that one, unless you had anything else you wanted to add?
No. So the next one is this?
Actually, we're, we're gonna vote on them one at a time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I really had you do them all, kinda custom, so, bear with me, like to open this up to anybody that'd like to speak for or against. Nobody there. Any further questions for?
Close public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Do I, any discussion on the board? Can I have a motion?
I make the motion that we grant Mark Rivet, the petitioner, and FPL LLC, the owner, the special exception under section two point zero two point one three E three of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot in the Town Center Overlay District to have less than the required... the Town Center Overlay District to have less than the required a hundred and twenty-five feet of foot frontage following a lot line adjustment. The parcel is located at an unnumbered lot on Railroad Avenue in the I-1 Industrial Aquifer Conservation, Flood Hazard Conservation, and Town Center Overlay Districts Tax Map, Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 078, Case Number 2018-37.
I'll second.
And should the board find that the petition meets the special exception criteria, staff recommends that any approval be conditioned upon the approval of the line of adjustments by the planning board.
And we have a second in by Lynn? Um, too late, I already volunteered you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, five zero zero. The next one, I'll read that in, and then we can go into it. Uh, Mark Rivet, petitioner, and Fraser Square Realty LLC owner, special exception under 2.02.13E2, Section Z, E2, Section 2.02.13E3, and Section 2.02.13E4.1A, to permit a lot in the Town Center Overlay District to have less than the required two thousand, twenty thousand square feet of area, less than the required hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage, and a front setback of less than the required thirty feet respectively. The parcel is located at 2 Railroad Avenue in the C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation, Flood Hazard Conservation, and Town Overlay Districts Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 079, Case Number 2018-38.
Okay.
Are you?
So, this one, we're talking about, uh, 479, and the one in the middle, which, as you just stated, is lacking frontage, is in the front setback, and doesn't have a total area required. So A, "The proposed additions, alterations, and improvements would serve to promote the reuse, restoration, rehabilitation, or otherwise enhance in a historic building or structure, or any other potentially historic building or structure identified in the Historic Resources Inventory component of the Town Center Plan because the proposed alterations to the site consist of enlarging the property so that all existing encroachments would be captured on the appropriate lots. The proposal would therefore make the property, the property more conforming as it pertains to the Town Center dimensional standards." B.
Uh, hold on a second. Um, Kelly, this seems to be the same exception, um, the same wording. Is the previous exception, can we?
It's a different lot.
Oh, but, so we have to have it all read in? Okay, sorry. Sorry, guys. So B.
B, "The proposed additions, alterations, or improvements are for use currently permitted within the Town Center Overlay District because the proposed lot line adjustment proposes to simply make the subject lot larger and does not propose to change the use that exists on the subject property." C, oh, C, "The proposed additions, alterations, or improvements would not result in significant, significantly increasing hazards to vehicles or pedestrians, or impair or impede emergency vehicles' access or provisions of emergency services, or the planned improvements to the transportation corridor because the proposed lot line adjustment would enlarge the subject property, well, but would make, not cause, oh, would not change the uses or operations that currently exist on site. This proposal would therefore not, uh, would result in no increased hazards to the vehicles or pedestrians and would not impair or impede emergency access."
D.
D, "The proposed additions, alterations, and improvements would not result in unreasonable impacts to abutting properties by way of increased noise, odor, visual blight, or other nuisance because proposed enlargement of the subject property will simply capture all the existing improvements which currently encroach onto the abutting property. There are no additions, alterations, or improvements to the existing buildings, so there will be no impacts to the abutting properties by way of noise, odor, or visual blight." "The proposed additions, alterations, or improvements would serve to enhance the overall goals of the Town Center Plan because this proposal will make the existing lots within the Town Center Overlay District more conforming. The proposed lot line adjustment will make the subject lot larger. There are no proposed additions, alterations, or improvements proposed to the structures or uses on the subject property."
And F?
F, "Adequate provisions for parking and other necessaries support facilities are provided for the proposed additions, alterations, or improvements because the proposed lot line adjustment will make the subject property larger and more conforming. There are no proposed modifications to the structures or uses on site. Given this, we believe that there is adequate parking and to, and support facilities on site for existing uses."
Any questions, comments? Like, to open up to the public, is there anybody that'd like to speak for or against? Close the public. Any final questions before, any final discussions? Can I have a motion?
Also move, we grant Mark Rivet, the petitioner, and Fraser Square Realty LLC, the owner, special exceptions under Section 2.02.13E2, Section 2.2.13E3, and Section 2.2.13E4A, to permit a lot in the Town Center Overlay District to have less than the required twenty thousand square feet of area, less than the required hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage, and a front setback of less than the required thirty feet respectively. Parcel is located at 2 Railroad Ave, in the C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation, Flood Hazard Conservation, and Town Center Overlay Districts Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 079, Case Number 2018-13. With the, with the recommendation that any approval be conditioned upon approval of the lot line adjustment by the planning board.
Actually, Fran beat you, second, by Fran. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, five zero zero. Onto the next, Mark Rivet, petitioner, and Dan Hawk, owner, special exception under Section 2.02.13E2, Section 2.02.13E3, Section 2.02.13E4A, and Section 2.02.13E4B, to permit a lot in the Town Center Overlay District to have less than a required twenty thousand square feet of area, less than the required hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage, a front setback of less than required thirty feet, and side setbacks of less than the required fifteen feet respectively. The parcel is located at 4 Railroad Avenue in the C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation and Town Center Overlay Districts Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 080, Case Number 2018-40, and I'm gonna save you from just reading the eight, the question, you just go A, give me the answer, we're good.
Good, that's, yes, all right.
Because we've read that in a couple times, I think they get the gist of what the question is.
Okay, A, "The proposed alterations to the site consist of enlarging the property so that all existing encroachments will be captured on the appropriate lots. This proposal will therefore make the properties more conforming as it pertains to the sound, Town Center dimensional standards."
B.
"The proposed lot line adjustment proposes to simply make the subject lot larger and does not propose to change the uses that exist on the subject property."
C.
"The proposed lot line adjustment would enlarge the subject properties, but would not change the uses or operations that currently exist on site. This proposal would therefore result in no increased hazards to vehicles or pedestrians and would not impair or impede emergency access."
D.
"Proposed enlargement of the subject property will simply capture all the existing improvements which currently encroach onto the abutting property. There are no additions, alterations, or improvements to the existing buildings, so there will be no impacts to the abutting properties by way of noise, odor, or visual blight."
F.
E.
E. I'm done.
"This proposal will make the existing lots within the Town Center Overlay District more conforming. The proposed lot line adjustment will make the, the subject lot larger. There are no proposed additions, alterations, or improvements to the structures or uses on the subject property."
Take us home.
F, "The proposed lot line adjustment will make the subject property larger and more conforming. There are no proposed modifications to the structures or on site, uses on site. Given this, we believe that there is adequate parking and support facilities on site for the existing use."
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public for or against? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Kelly, comments? Okay, can I have a motion? You, yeah, sure, go for it. Thirty-nine. Turn on your mic.
I did special exception, I'm getting punched in.
Yeah, it's okay.
Special exception under Section 2.02.13E2, Section 2.02.13E3, Section 2.02.13E4A, and Section 2.02.13E4B, to permit a, a lot in the Town Center Overlay District to have less than the required twenty thousand square feet of area, less than the required hundred and twenty-five feet of foot of frontage, a front setback less than the required thirty feet, and a side setbacks of less than the required fifteen feet respectively. This parcel is located in 4 Railroad Avenue in the C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation and Town Center just Overlay Districts Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 080, Case Number 2018-39."
Should the board approve, find the petition meets the special exception criteria, staff recommends that any approval be conditioned upon approval of the lot line adjustment by the planning board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, beat Lynn. All right, so, seconded by Lynn. By the way, reading this, reading that at ten o'clock, and that is pretty, pretty impressive, you can get all those numbers straight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, five zero zero, and we're on our, onto our last one, and gentlemen, I do appreciate your patience this evening. Mark Rivet, petitioner, owner, special exception under Section 2.02.13D1 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a function hall facility in support of an existing funeral home in the Town Overlay District. The parcel is located at 425 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation and Town Center Overlay District Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 077, Case Number 2018-40. So, real quick on this one, because I know we were talking about the lot plans as far as getting that all legit, but now we're talking about building a function hall? Or is one already been built?
No.
Yeah, it's okay.
So, Mark is proposing to construct an addition onto his existing funeral home facility here? There's already a building back here, and some parking spaces for his vehicles.
What's the building that's back there now?
Uh, what is this back here?
Well, we're going over a partial of it.
Oh, that's right, there's a, so, I didn't bring the architectural with him, but this has got a lot of tacked-on additions and whatnot, so he's gonna kind of tear those off and build, make it more homogeneous, and not have...
Okay.
Clutter.
But it's, right, so it's gonna look much cleaner, uh, but this is a two, two-story?
Yes.
On this side? Or just one story on this side and two story on this side?
Two story on one side and actually, three story.
All right, so it's two story on this side?
Because we have a drive-under garage around the back of the funeral home.
Right, so it's two story on this side, and the function hall's gonna be on this level?
The second floor of that level.
On the second floor of that level, okay. So, and what's the ground floor gonna be?
Uh, garage space.
I mean, or first floor, I should say.
First floor will be garage space, and then it will be drive-under garage, which is...
Oh, so, you're gonna have a...
So it's the parking for the function and for the funeral home, is, is what the parking is gonna need to be?
It's mostly for your...
So almost a drive-under parking garage.
Right, so he's got a drive-under on this side.
For our use.
Oh, but it'd be for your use, not for customers.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
So drive-under on this side, and drive-in on, at grade up, up here.
Correct.
And then above that is gonna be the function hall.
Okay.
Same height as the existing funeral home, not gonna be any taller.
Okay.
It's gonna match, the, the roof line will actually match a lot better than it does now.
Okay. You said three stories, I'm thinking, now, now we got a three-story building going up behind that.
No, it will not be any taller than the existing hip roofs that are there.
Okay.
Right, it's only three story on this side.
It's really, it's really a two-story building.
Except when you drive around the back.
With the basement, with the drive-under basement. Having a garage.
Right.
So, okay, so this is a special exception and out of variance to put this in there?
For the use.
For the use.
For the use.
Function hall use.
Allowed by special exception.
Oh, it is allowed by special exception, okay.
Just gotta get the special exception together.
Okay, and then go through all the building permits, all right. We go A, B, C, D, E?
And he will need site plan approval on this?
Well, sorry?
He will need site plan approval on this?
Yes. Uh, if you could just go through A, B, C, D, I will need you to, because this is a little different than the other ones, I need you to read all of it, thanks.
It's a couple shorter, so.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, A is, "The site is in appropriate location for the proposed use in accordance with the Town Center Plan because the subject site is currently occupied by Rivet Funeral Home. The proposed addition to the property would include the expansion of the funeral home with garage space and a function room. The function room would fit in well with the existing uses, and approving this proposal would encourage an appropriate mixture of land uses on the property, which is consistent with the overall goals of the Town Center Plan." The proposed, oh, any questions?
Go ahead, go ahead.
"The proposed use would not result in significantly increased hazards to vehicles or pedestrians by way of traffic congestion in, ingress or egress because the proposed expansion of the funeral home and the addition of the function room would not result in significant increases in hazards to vehicles, pedestrians, or traffic congestion. This plan proposes parking and pedestrian access improvements, as well as sightlighting improvements, which will adequately address pedestrian and vehicle safety."
C.
"The proposed use would not result in unreasonable impacts to abutting properties by way of increased noise, odor, visual blight, or other nuisances because the proposed expansion of the existing funeral home and the addition of a function room will not result in unreasonable impacts to the abutting properties by way of noise, odor, or visual blight. The expansion will consist of building improvements which will be visually pleasing, and the site improvements are generally located to the rear of the property and will have adequate buffering to neighboring abutters. Generally speaking, this proposal will be utilizing existing improvements."
And D.
"The proposed use is designed in harmony with the overall goals of the Town Center Plan with respect to building, transportation corridor, and site design and arrangement because proposed expansion of the funeral home and addition of the function room will result in building, traffic circulation, parking, drainage, and sightlighting improvements, which will be in harmony with the goals of the Town Center Plan. This proposal will consist of an appropriate mixture of land uses that will work well with the surrounding traffic patterns and will fit in well with the neighboring businesses and uses."
Questions from the board? But, for you.
Yeah, Mark, on this hall, when I first, uh, read this, I thought it was just bereavement breakfast or something like that, you know, does this include weddings, or any, anyone who wants to rent it?
I'd probably end up using it for that, like, small gatherings of small things.
Birthday parties, retirement parties, that type of thing.
Actually, could you put the mic between you two, just so it's on?
So, it, so it won't be, uh, just related to the funeral home?
Not necessarily.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's my question.
Some people, you know, birthday party, funeral, could be, it's a niche, I'm sure.
Divorce party?
Yeah, whatever. Um, any other questions? Yeah, any other questions from the board? Uh, okay, I'm gonna open this up to the public, is there anybody for or against this petition? We're gonna close the public. Any discussion on the board, motions?
I'll make the last motion of the night. I would like to make the motion that we accept, yeah, grant, thank you.
Right.
Grant the special exception for Mark Rivet, Rivet, special, Mark Rivet, special petitioner, owner, special exception under Section 2.02.13D1 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a function hall facility in support of an existing funeral home in the Town Center Overlay District. The parcel is located at 425 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation and Town Center Overlay Districts Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 077, Case Number 2018-40, and I did finally get it right.
Yes, you did, also, if there's a...
Yes, there is, yes, I forgot that, sorry. Should the board find the petition, uh, that the petition meets the special exception criteria, staff recommends that any approval be conditioned upon the approval of the site plan by the planning board.
Do I have a second, Kathleen, seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, sorry, hold on, did you have something you wanted to add? Okay, go ahead, please add your comment.
Site plan...
Could change the...
Isn't valid if it doesn't get the lot line adjustment.
Speak into your mic, turn your mic on.
This site plan couldn't possibly fly if it doesn't get the lot line adjustments.
Right.
And although the lot line adjustments are already addressed to go to the planning board, should it have been part of this condition of planning board approval also?
I think it was, was it?
It's a technical thing, but...
I thought it was.
This couldn't fly because the building would be on two different lots.
So, originally, we just received a planning board application for the lot line adjustment. Upon review of that application, all of these issues, for lack of a better term, came up in the review, and staff realized that multiple special exceptions were needed. So, that's what prompted...
So, the planning board pretty much is already approved?
No, the planning board hasn't viewed it yet.
No, no, okay, haven't been there yet, all right.
Staff... Yeah, staff recommended to continue those planning board cases so that the applicant could come before zoning board to get the proper relief and then go to planning board. So, the planning board has not reviewed the application.
So, although we approve...
That's why you're conditioning all these approvals.
The special exceptions, we approve the special exceptions, planning board still could potentially have the right to say no.
Yep. That's why everything's conditioned on site plan approval.
As long as they approved the lot line adjustments before, then it would be, it would flow.
Right.
If not, it can't possibly happen.
Correct.
Right, but if they don't have the special exceptions to get the lots approved, then you can't, so it's chicken and the egg.
What I'm saying is, the planning board needs to be scheduled in the appropriate...
It just so happened that the application deadlines fell where they fell, so they submitted both in the hopes that these, this relief would be granted. If it wasn't, I would assume they'd withdraw or something, or appeal, whatever.
So, based on, based on Lenny's comments, I'm gonna ask one more time. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, 5-0-0. Motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, have a good night.
You too.
People already have your jackets on, calm down. I have, I got another half hour of, if I was, no, I'm kidding, you guys would kill me. All right, we have one other thing to go over.
We don't, sorry.
We don't, we don't have minutes?
Minutes were not included in your packets, so if you could table it to the next...
So, all in favor tabling minutes to the next meeting?
Aye.
All right, okay.
We're done.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Seconded by Fran. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, have a great Halloween. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your patience this evening.